A summary of what's left in the budget process. We have this work session tonight. And next Tuesday at the regular meeting, I'll be presenting the proposed budget. And we also post it online next week and we publish it in the paper next week. Thursday, June 9th, that's when we're running the advertisement of the proposed budget. On Thursday, June 16th, we're going to be having a public hearing. This says that it's at 5 o'clock. I've just learned that there might be a conflict in here for a meeting that starts at 4:00. So that time may change. I just want to be really clear on that. But it is a public hearing for that night. And then adoption is scheduled for Thursday, June 23rd. Right now it's 6:00. That could be changed if you prefer, but right now it's at 6:00. With that, I'm just going to hand it over to Eric so he could review the ARPA projects and revenues.
Good evening. I'll run through ARPA. And then when we're concluded with that, I'll hand it back over to Nancy and she'll do the capital.
Regular capital.
We had it up for a second. I think maybe they're making some last minute. Can you all walk through with them real quick while we...
Sure.
They have this.
Okay, so everyone has a handout up to... Okay, great.
Page three.
All right, so yeah, starting on page three. The... We have the total amount of funds awarded to the county was 10.6 million. The county in February elected to take the option in their final rule to claim a $10 million revenue loss, which frees up the fund. It's not as restricted as originally was. You can use it on anything that's considered government services. So you don't have to stick to the strict ARPA rules as we previously did. We received the funds in two payments. The first one we received about a year ago. The second one, we should receive any day. Nancy and I went through the process to receive the second one. Just updating who the signatory authority is and who's able to log in. So we did that. So any day we should receive the second 5.3 million. The funds are to be committed by December 31st to 24 and have to be spent by December 31st to 26. So we're still in the... Even though we've had it for a year, we're still in the beginning stages. And we're under no obligation to spend a certain amount at a certain time other than it has to be completely allocated and spent by those two days. We've only spent about 900,000. And so the existing balance is at the 9.7 million. Oh, here we go. We're up.
And the 9.7 million includes what we're expecting to be getting in the next couple of days. Page four. Get down there.
We're working on it.
There you go.
Here we go. All right, so that got you caught up to what we just talked about. The 900,000 that's been spent, this is where the money has gone. Plus a little bit for interest earned. We're allowed to have this money in an interest-bearing account. The largest contributor was the thank you award, which was the one-time payment given to county staff. We can go run through all these individually or you can just glance at it, whichever you prefer. Wellness holiday, which was the one day off for folks to go get a vaccine.
We got those. We went over.
Okay, all right. All right.
We know what we spent.
Got you. ARPA funds committed to fiscal year '23 already. So this is money that we've promised but have not yet spent. We had an agenda item a few weeks ago for the restroom renovation at the jail. The match for the county health department with the cities. The sheriff's office vehicles, HVAC contracts. So all these things are committed but not yet spent, which is a 1.7. So what we've spent and what we've committed leaves us with about 8 million left out of the 10.6. So this is all the requests that we have received from county departments moving forward. So out of the... So I'll go ahead and just run through it quickly. We have it broken down by department. We'll begin with the sheriff's office. Premium pay, 1.25. ARPA allowed for $13 an hour of premium pay for county staff. So that's where that number comes from. The fleet lease, that is what you talked about at the last workshop. This is three years. So 16 vehicles, that is approximately 700,000. Tasers, 70 tasers, 245. Two transport vans. This is to transfer folks to and from courtroom or to or from other facilities where they need to be housed. And then IT for body dash cam storage. This is cloud storage for all the videos that they record. And this is three years at 350,000. So that's sheriff's office request. And I can go ahead and run through all these and we can go back with questions. Or if you want to... If you want to go ahead and talk about department by department, we can do that.
Let's... Six and seven is... That was a 14 million.
Correct.
Well, I think it's clear we're not going to make that.
I'll keep going and we can go back and discuss if you wish.
Just kind of... Let's just hit the highlights.
Okay.
You know, we don't have to dwell deep. Just I was... What I was going to attempt to do is I guess some subtotals along the way here.
Okay. So we can jump to page eight. Just as a quick summary, we have the total awarded amount. We have the expenditures and revenues to date. We have the commitments for next year already, 1.7. And then we have the total request that we've received in addition to that, which leaves us about 6 million short. The big-ticket items that have been requested, the premium pay for the sheriff's office, the radio, countywide radio upgrade, resiliency center build-out, Public Works Dirt Road Stabilization Program over the next three years, broadband to all county facilities, and the countywide HVAC replacement for county facilities. Those are the tickets that are... Those are the high-ticket items that are 3/4 of a million or more.
All right. To me, I think, you know, we need to kind of broadly prioritize as in what we're going for first. I know there's some... Let's not say that something's more, more, more less important. But I guess in essence, that's what we will be saying. So... And obviously, you know, I think we're spending public money and we ought to spend it to benefit the public as much as possible. Or... But with that being said, you know, right here at the sheriff's office, premium pay now. What is the premium pay versus what we were looking at with the salary that we've already done? I guess I'm not...
So the ARPA legislation allowed for up to $13 an hour in addition to the pay that staff receives for working during the pandemic. So you're allowed up to, according to ARPA rules, up to $13 an hour in addition to the salary.
When does that period define this?
It begins January of 2020.
2020.
2020, yeah, so.
When does it end or does it pass again?
The end date is the end of the ARPA program, yeah.
And end date is what?
Yeah, the end date was September.
I'm sorry.
It's only for like a period. It's not quite a... I think it's just under a year, is not sure.
Okay, so January to September of 2020.
The way it was defined is that each employee for working during COVID was eligible for up to $25,000 per person. And we didn't request 25,000 per person. We requested 10. As... Under the ARPA guidelines.
So it was $13 an hour up to 25,000.
25,000. All right, just moving on down. Now, this is the lease program we're talking about. And I'm... Is this to... These 16 vehicles, is that... Is that the note on the whole lease program or... The whole lease period? It says three years.
So yes, so that... So each year would be 1/3 of that cost. So the 700,000 for the... For the entire three-year period.
Okay.
It's a five-year lease. That's only for three years of the five.
And that's just because of ARPA requirements. We got expiration when we...
Correct.
Right. Yeah, they got to be spent by '26, so we've got free and half.
Exactly.
All right. Now, let's roll back just a second. What we had talked about as it relates to the vehicles. We've gone ahead and bought 14. And then we want to get on a lease on a schedule here, you know, every year before we're rolling them in and rotating them in and out. So we don't accumulate before we're trying to get 30 or 40 vehicles at a certain time, you know. Normally, we do that out of our capital and our splot money. I don't want to forget that we have splot still. And, you know, it's...
We have a slide for that.
Yeah, I'm sure y'all do. But I... It almost seems like there are less limitations on this money as opposed to the splot money. This money, pretty well spend on what you want to. Whereas with splot, there are some parameters you have to go by. Obviously, this is three of the five years, so there's going to be two years. Something else is going to have to pick up slack, so I just want to... Otherwise... And keep in mind, if we're looking at this on a regular basis, we will have more than one contract moving during these five years. Would we not? In other words, we bought 14, go take 15 on a lease now. Next year, how many are we talking about rotating? I think we're looking at rotating, you know, like, you know, basically this again. So...
Do you remember release? How many did we release a couple of years ago?
15.
15.
15.
So we've already got one lease paid for it. You know, so if you figure... If we figure... You figure we're going to have five of these rolling once this... That program's fully funded. You know, you're looking at 2... 250 a year times five. Looking at a million dollars a year to sustain what we're talking about here. So just rolling that out there so nobody loses sight of where this is... Where this is going. I'm not speaking negatively. I just want to be, you know, everybody's aware that that's what we're setting up here. Too many more. I couldn't say that much. But... And that's why I'm saying, you know, I want to... You say you have a splot. I'm looking at what you got right here. Can you give me the overview of the splot money? I just kind of... So I can kind of get a big picture in my head.
Well, there's really two things. There's the capital expenditure. We have a capital expenditure fund, Fund 350. And that's the one that in the proposed budget, we're proposing a contribution from the general fund of 400,000.
Right.
And we're going into the new fiscal year. It should have a fund balance of about 330,000. So the combination of the 330 fund balance with the new 400,000 funding would leave in capital expenditure fund 730. So what we did is looked at all the capital expenditure requests and tried to move over here what made sense coming over and being paid out of this fund. So that totals $650,000.
Let's just pause for just a moment.
And we have asterisked the ones that we had considered a priority.
Okay.
Hold on. And I guess in fleet, this would be Shalana. Do we... We have... We don't have alignment systems there now?
No, sir. Right now, we... The contract that I have to do is how for everything, every vehicle.
Just out of curiosity, how much would be spending on alignments, you think?
It would make up... There are alignments make up for within two or three years in the unit. So I would say 10,000. And then not including, obviously, wear and tear on the vehicle and tires and such things.
And then we got to have somebody that's trained to do it. So do you have someone on staff or we got to get someone that does it? That would be a requirement, any person?
No, it wouldn't require any person.
I mean, I can see where we may get... More having our one in-house. They want you to come up where you can be recorded. Players, stickler.
She put an email last night.
She had BB go, she'd already shot him. Now, say what you said again for the benefit.
So the return of investment, we would make up for the laser alignment within three years. So we do have the staff that would be able to operate the equipment. Really, what we have right now is by not doing the alignments, we're wearing tires out quicker or we're sending them out and waiting on a truck shop for three or four days sometimes.
That's what I was talking about. If we had one on staff or in-house, that we would do more timely alignments and... And have less downtime, I presume. I don't know how many...
Correct.
Vehicles we have that need to be aligned. I'm assuming that we could do it for countywide departments.
Yes, sir, correct. This would be able to handle all of our emergency vehicles, large trucks, all the way up to the dump trucks. So from a car at the tax assessor level to the dump trucks, it would do everything.
The sheriff's office, you don't have anything like that, I would say. We're mechanical. It's outside. Do you probably like have your vehicles at alignment as well?
Very much so.
Okay. I just... Just trying to... I see on down there is something else. It's not an asterisk. You see CCS patrol building improvements. Where are those building improvements? Does anybody know?
It's for the new...
Train microphone.
It's for the old Station 14 where animal control was, that building.
Where we made this swap around.
Right.
Now, we need a... Storage building and building improvements. Okay? Animal control, planning. Going down here to Bola Wrap. Cool tech machine. What are those? Just out of curiosity. Anybody know? That's that microphone with Sheriff, sir. He gonna be on record, Sheriff.
I believe that it's the large, it looks like a giant radiator, has water flowing through it and the fan. It's basically a cooling system.
A cool tank? Oh, okay. What I'm going to tell them.
Like a portable air conditioner.
Yeah, except it doesn't really produce AC. It's just...
It's definitely...
It's like a swamp cooler.
It's a different... We survive from survival in that garage with its 97 degrees or 100 degrees up there. It's about.
Yes.
I've seen this. It make a huge difference. Okay. And then it was a Bola Wrap, just out of curiosity. Recording.
Honestly, I'm not sure about that one. I know it's part of it is a restraining system. And I believe there are multiple levels to it. There's, you know, the tasers. Well, in a enclosed environment like in the jail, they've come out with a new technology that's actually... It's a glove that's worn so that when you reach out to touch them, it delivers the same shock that a taser will. It is mainly used in correctional environments. There are other components to it, but that would be the main component that steps out of my mind.
Okay. And then we've got Public Works, other equipment purchase options. Is this... Well, we have... Well, we must have two motor graders. I'll be... I'm sorry, Ms. Shalana, could I get you that while you were here?
Would that take that? I definitely should have known. Yes, that would be... We've got three that are on lease right now that we started four years ago. Two come up now. And then there's one more that will come up. So one thing we've learned is that the motor graders do hold their value as well as, you know, lasts a long time.
These are new when we got them or relatively?
Yes, sir, they were new. So if we keep them as they go out instead of leasing and starting all over again, we can keep these for another five to seven years and still trade them out and have 50% of their value.
How many other motor graders do we have operational?
We have five total, two of which we just bought this summer that we traded in old ones and purchased new ones. I think we got them for $60,000 apiece that have 5,000 hours. So we'll continue to use those for...
So you got two new ones, three on lease, two rolling up now. Want to buy the leased ones out?
Correct.
Okay.
Those be out of warranty? Once the lease is up or is...
They're pretty much, I think, going to be standard on the 3,000 to 5,000 hours, 3,000 to 5,000. So some of those things will go out anyway.
Does that include any extended type warranties or...
No, sir. I think we did the two that we just recently bought. We did buy some, you know, John Deere financial sales use some sort of an extended. So we got one year on both of those. That was extremely reasonable and gave an additional like 2,000 hours and 12 months to cover anything on it.
Will there be any offers, something like that on these two?
Could be. I can ask.
Might be worth looking into for them. It sure don't take much of the break on that type of equipment to...
Yeah, that's kind of from my experience, it seems like.
Add up.
Weight technology is on equipment now. Once it goes out of warranty, I mean, you could be looking at major hair loss.
Yeah, look at... If you could, look and see what it would take to... Extend some coverage on those two.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Nancy, based on what you're telling me is if we did all of these, we're looking at probably about 90,000.
That's correct, yes.
Projected fund balance for next year. So we're putting 400 in for this. We would pretty much use up the capital fund, capital improvement fund for next year.
Correct. And that would just be a decision for you all to make on how much you want to... I don't want to use the word drain it, but to reduce it.
That's what happens.
Yeah.
There will be no left. But... I'm just... I see the value in all of these. And it was 80,000, not 90. But we may have an opportunity in the course of the upcoming year to... Once we get our final numbers, to add some to the capital improvement funds. Budget numbers by the end of the year or whatever. Depends on sales, revenue, sales tax revenues. There's a lot of, you know... If they hold up... As Ben said, we going to be in here spending money like Drunk Sabre, maybe the rest of the county that keep building. And our sales tax revenue were to stay willing to hold up. You know, I'm sitting here looking at this and I'm trying to prioritize some of these things. And I see your asterisks and I don't disagree. Other than apparently you like Joey Lynn better than you do...
Those are... Those are 17...
Joey.
They're 17-year-old chairs.
You like Joey Lynn better than you do Joey. Just messing with you. You know, I'm sitting here looking at it. And I know this is a fluid document. This thing will change. It's not like we're going to run out and be doing all this stuff immediately. Of course, on July 1st, it'll be fully funded. Money will be there if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
So technically, you could. Now, Sheriff, as it relates to Station 14, what are we doing with the old substation? One time I thought we were going to give that up.
It's still very much in use. The...
Well, I thought... That's what I'm saying. I thought we were going to ship most everything over to the 14.
We're shifting as much as we can. There's still... The investigators, the bulk of them, are still at Forte's... Or excuse me, are still at the substation. What's been moved to 14 has been... We're moving the boats there. Training has been moved there. Our training room was extremely small. You could fit about 10 people in it. We've shifted as much as we can down there, but we still... We occupy both places fully. There's no... There's no...
Do we not... I mean, how much of that building do you think, once you've... So you've already moved everything you feel like you can from the substation to 14?
Yes, sir.
So...
But I take that back. There's the... One of the camels, the... For the dogs is going to be moved from the substation to 14.
Okay.
Other than that, the bulk of the stuff has been moved.
So what I'm looking at is how much... How much of that substation are we utilizing now?
100% of it.
You still use 100% of it?
Yes, sir. It's... We've been out of room for years. We've had people stacked on top of each other.
Is there not another facility, something that would be more conducive to what you got and maybe less valuable commercially?
Not that we have. And I...
Anybody know me?
Have a building.
By shaking their head, you could do one.
I could build a new one.
Well, we built a new one. We built a new one that'd be part of jail complex. Then we can sort less the substation.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's like the building of the jail. Sheriff recalls a couple of years ago, I think, when Mr. Brad and I made way of my... So I'm going to tell you the truth. Unlike what you've heard in the past, splot is never going to build a jail for us.
Correct.
You know, not unless it's over a 40-year jail. By the time you get to the end of it, you need to... And that was not going to happen.
Right.
A jail complex is a separate... It's going to require...
We'd have to do bonds.
Revenue bonds.
Yes.
Putting bonds out and to get it done.
We're not doing revenue bonds.
Well...
General application?
General application, but yeah, not revenue, but bonds. We got a bar today, got money. Color carry, go to the bar.
I got a silly question. Why is it a tier one project, splot?
Why is what?
A jail. Save the complex.
But we were... That is a way of accumulating the money.
And it's also just how the splot regulations and procedures, they would define that as a level one project. I think it's that, it's court houses. They really define that.
Right. It's a county... It's a countywide project.
Sure. So, I mean, that's... I mean...
So what's your point?
Well, I guess my point is, say a jail would be a primary project for splot.
Yes.
Tier one.
Yeah.
Well, I think you would get a lot of opposition from the cities.
You would never get... You're not going to get a splot passed with the entire jail complex in a splot. We couldn't afford the therapy that all the cities would need. And not to mention, it would obviously hinder us as well. But we... Well, we're sitting here spending splot money as well. But, you know, with that being said, one of the main reasons that it was... What you're referring to was to have land acquisition was the original intent, is to start the process, as I recall. Makes like $2 billion or something, 2.5?
So the land acquisition...
So, the land acquisition, do you say it was Sploes?
Oh, I believe it was two million.
Yeah.
And, but we've spent five hundred thousand of that, which partially funded the Georgia Power Building.
But I think it was actually, I think, I think it was actually one point five million, and we got a million left. Yeah, we got a million left.
But we did, we did spend it partially on the Georgia Power Building.
Okay, well, any event, you know, that's a... I think that's something that we're gonna have to seriously sit down and look at, how much money we gonna spend on existing projects, existing facilities. You know, I don't want to dump a bunch of money into something that we, when we build a new jail facility, we're gonna be planning to abandon. Where we spend, you know, especially jail blade or stuff like that, it it might not be conducive to other commercial enterprises, meaning if something that be toward, could something be getting rid of very easily. But I think, I think in the near future, moving forward with looking at that and seeing what it takes, because I know when we eventually start talking about buildings, you know, and this is not on the topic right now, but...
And our countywide projects on Sploes date will be fully funded probably in the next month or two, which was ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand. So, we've been taking thirty-five percent of the monthly Sploes and allocating it to those countywide projects. And we're almost to the point that we've collected all of that. So, what happens is that thirty-five percent drops off, and then whatever we receive in Sploes, that gets, the hundred percent gets dispersed between the county and the city. So, our Sploes money is gonna go up once it's fully funded. Because we're not taking that thirty-five percent off the top.
So, how about quantify that for prospective use?
I would say probably about seventy-five to a hundred thousand a month additional for us.
For what?
For the county.
How many years do we have left on this one?
Pardon?
How many years do we have left on this Sploes?
Three.
Three? Seventy-five thousand?
Sploes has been really trending up, so that's a pretty conservative number. It's just hard to tell how long this upward, you know, collections are gonna go.
Well, that's what I'm referring to, well, I guess.
I mean, I would say, two years ago, the monthly collections from the state were six hundred and fifty thousand, which was dispersed between the county and the cities. Last month, I think it was just close to a million.
Right, right, it started in nine hundredish, I mean, even through twenty, everyone was amazed at how much, that's really when it started jumping. You know, it just, everyone was amazed how much, of course, everybody staying home, nobody was traveling. Just, I guess, more stuff would be involved here. But that's about two point seven million, and I'm just thinking out loud, prospectively, like, for example, we gonna have a million dollars a year in a couple of years, just on leases with the sheriff's office cars. And, you know, theoretically, I swear to God, assuming that now, would it be as much if we're doing it more regular, we get better values, trade-ins, we have better numbers, possibly. But cost of car is gonna go up too, so I don't know. I said, you better be thinking about a million dollars a year, and of course, that would, there's two billion dollars you gonna need for you. After three years is up. Anyway, I'm just looking at where other monies that we gonna have down the road, five, you know, three, four, five years from now. All right, and I just, I just kind of wanted to see where, what was in here. What's in our Sploes, have you got the Sploes money as well, what's committed to coming in and...
So, per the referendum, and the only thing we're looking at here is the building renovations, machinery, equipment, vehicles and technology. So, the referendum for the machinery equipment was five point four million. Currently, our expenditures are four point three million, and that does include the conclusion of the existing lease for the sheriff's vehicles.
For the first lease.
For the first lease, so I included that in the number, because we're committed to that.
I got you.
So, for machinery equipment.
You're committed on the second, you know, it's not in these numbers, but...
Correct, it's not in these numbers.
Right.
So, that would leave a mil, just over a million available out of that. Now, this is all based on the fifty-five million dollar Sploes. Again, it's been trending, I think it's going to at least meet that fifty-five million and probably exceed that fifty-five million. So, these numbers, probably as we get closer to the end of the Sploes, can be adjusted.
Well, I can remember when I first became on commission, where monies were being divvied up based on projections instead of reality. So, I think we need to stick to that realistic number, and if we have
Understood.
If we have extra money, I'm willing to bet that there's gonna be a department that wants to spend it, so I don't think we're gonna have a trouble getting rid of it.
So, based on that...
Building renovation, what was in that building renovations, I'm sorry?
That was partially funding the parking lot in Station eighteen, Fire Station?
Went up in.
Fund the...
Come from Tarboro?
Right, Tarboro, the parking lot next to the park. So, it's Sploes.
What, what do we, is there anything committed in that remaining two point eight?
No.
Yes.
What?
Hope it was complete.
Oh. Yes, it's not officially committed, but the plant, our internal plan was the fleet building of two point one million.
I thought we were doing that.
We are, we haven't. We intend to, we have not put out the architect and engineering RFP yet because of how high the prices are for building. We're trying to hold out.
Wow, wow, what?
Because of how high it costs to build right now, we're trying to wait till the market kind of corrects itself, to where we get the best.
Bet you believe in the Tin Fairy too.
Lumber's been coming down, so I'm hopeful.
Yeah, okay.
I know hope's not a plan, but we're hoping.
It ain't much one, I think, I think we're gonna need to move forward with that. What do you think, Chuck? Look at, we're gonna cross that business row here.
Hope is not a plan.
I hope it's not a plan, I...
I've seen that work a lot.
I've lived on hope before, didn't last long. But I think we need to move forward, and let's put these projects in motion. All the while, things are deteriorating, you know, we're not, you know, I feel like I thought we were moving forward with it, so I would like to move forward. We budgeted, let's see what we can get for it, and if, you know, how much of that two point eight, two point nine million dollars are we looking at? Your building out there, do we know?
Do you want to, this slide?
Yes, two point one.
What?
Two point one is the full project, that's what the plan was with Sploes. And we're projecting that this year, we may spend a million of that.
Okay. So, of the two point nine, this could potentially utilize two point one of it.
No, the two point one plus the other seven hundred and fifty thousand for the rehab of the buildings.
Which buildings are we talking about, rehab two facilities, which facilities?
I think it's pretty much.
Pretty much any, any and all.
This is something that Mr. Zink put together for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Part of it you've already received in the parks, which is six hundred and fifty thousand.
The parks is included in there?
No, that's, this is above and beyond that number.
Oh, the parks, the parks is...
I'm just saying parks, a lot of the stuff for the parks, because they're our property right now, if we wanted to fund them out of Sploes, you can. But we also have other buildings that need real rehabilitation too, as far as roof replacements, foundational issues.
What do we have, what is our total we need to do? I'm looking at seven hundred and fifty there, that's just a I can say what that number there is, like it's not my dream. Mr. Zink, send you seven fifty.
So, if you, you just add the sub, the sub fifty to six point, or six fifty, you're looking at one point four million going down.
I understand that math, I wonder what's in seven fifty?
What's in the seven fifty?
What do you buy with seven fifty?
You're looking at the historic courthouse roof replacement, Brian Lang, putting in a fire system for Brian Lang, because they don't have one in the historic library there. You're looking at Main Point, redoing the parking lot for the defect's main point there, so you get the drainage and making ADA accessible to the Main Point clinic, because it is not at the moment. Fire Station sixteen, they're back, parking lot is falling in, it needs new drains.
Sixteen.
Sixteen's out of Harry's bluff.
Harry's bluff.
Yeah, so they need new, new drains put in back there, and then their back parking lot, because they can't pull through right now, they have to come in and out of the front. Fire Station twelve, you're looking at putting in the sewer to the main and taking it off of the septic there. So, there's cost involved with getting it hooked up to the city main, and then Fire Station fifteen is a renovation of their bathroom facility, because it is in bad shape. And that adds up to about seven, to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, now, which leads me to another question. We're like, one point seven million here, how much are you involved, will be involved in the fleet facility project?
Working with Sean on the fleet project as far as project management.
We're loading up projects here.
Yep.
You know, I'm looking at logistically, you know, how, which ones are we gonna be able to, how many, how many is you gonna be able to juggle?
All of them.
You heard it here, folks.
There's no other choice. Get them done.
Lockman, I don't mind this, damn the needle, just load the wagon, I'm with you, buddy. I get it. All right?
So...
Kind of dealt around a lot.
So, going back to the machinery, equipment and vehicle and technology, this is a list of all the requests. And again, we asterisk those that may be considered a priority. And in that, I only have a million ninety-two thousand, the requests are one point four million, so my shortfall is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
That's over the course of the next three years.
That, yeah, that million ninety-two is for, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I see you, 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 not necessarily you, your group has only asterisk five of those things.
Well, the, the very bottom one is the existing enterprise lease, so that's a have to. That's a have to.
And the three vehicles?
Were the new positions that were discussed last week.
Funded.
Last week.
Okay.
That, that are gonna be part of the proposed budget, yes.
Is this flatbed F three fifty Ford, is that the one we just purchased the brand new one, or is this additional?
It's additional.
Additional one?
So, what whoa, this F three fifty B four, Ms. Shalina, please?
We currently have a two thousand and two model F three fifty flatbed that carries the air compressor and charging units, and predominantly does most of the maintenance for the motor graders in the field, yes. I mean, it's a commuting vehicle, it gets the motor graders where they need to go. But the most recent one we did was the F seven fifty, and that was for carrying the backhoes and small equipment.
You got a new one that fleet runs around a white flatbed?
Yes, yes, sir, sorry, that was fleet, this one would have been for public works, which is the two thousand and two. So, that one was for road calls and replaced a two thousand and two model unit that was out there.
All right, hold on, can you take off? A front end loader?
Yes, sir, this one's a two thousand and four, and we've got close to six thousand hours on it, so it's
Broken.
It's, it's broken, and it's starting to cost a lot of money to keep going, and it is the predominant loader that we use at the stockpile to fill the dump trucks, to take out to the dirt roads and fill the rock like that. That is a non-negotiable item unless we're gonna fill with a backhoe, which would take twice as long. So, that's why it's on there with an asterisk, that is a critical component that we use.
We do milling?
We do millings, we do, oh, the, yes, ideally, we will start trying to do some base repairs on our own, and instead of just cold mat, cold mix and patching our potholes, we can cut it out and actually do a real repair for the road. And that's an attachment that would go on the skid steer, so it'll have like a six-foot width and be able to go out, mill out the center, actually send a truck, get asphalt and repair it. And I would also say that this is what we've determined would fit into the Sploes categories and be justified.
Is that, is, I understand, the, these requests, available spend, is that what you're projecting through when?
The end of Sploes.
Okay.
So, you want to, you want to cover that with Sploes, that you're short three hundred thousand dollars?
Correct, but that million has to last three more years. But an option would be, we could always move any one of these over to the capital improvement fund, and instead of funding capital improvements, the four hundred thousand, we could put in seven hundred thousand or seven hundred, whatever the number is.
We're just playing pea to shell game.
Right, correct, correct.
We spent over eighty thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund, and we overspent here three hundred, so that
that's a lot, wasn't the way it's going here.
One of them.
Yeah, the countywide projects would be fully funded within about a month or two. That would be ten million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars collected for the countywide project.
In July will fully fund it.
Correct, but then, of course, every month after, you know, all of these are also cash flow issues, I mean, we don't...
And we talked about two point seven million, the seventy-five, well, after that runs out. Yeah.
One of the things we have to consider, so the referendum, Sploes law states that whenever you collect up to your approved referendum amount, fifty-five million is ours, any excess proceeds has to go towards debt, we don't have debt, so it would roll into our general fund.
Wait a second. Capital leases on them?
Besides the leases, but...
Say leases count, don't they?
It's a different kind of...
This is, yeah.
I understand it's a different kind of debt, but as I recall, it's a debt. Do we know that we could, we would not be...
We would, we would have, as long as everything continues the way it is now, which is hard to predict, but if we continue on, we're gonna have more than enough to cover those leases.
I understand.
Plus...
Like you said, that was such, it's that pea to shell game. You know, you know, it's, whether we move from here, we take them there, you know, whatever, Fox want to put it in. And I, I understand these are all objection, but...
One thing I also do want to say too, though, is that all of these is what was requested for this upcoming fiscal year. We have several more requests.
Just we're, we're projecting out these needs for the next three years. However, as Mr. Clark just pointed out, as I need, the, the, all these commitments that we're even doing here today, I don't care if it's ARPA, capital budget or Sploes money, you know, things can change.
But I have just noticed an error in one of the calcul, well, one of the items listed. When I came up with a million ninety-two thousand remaining, I added in the entire sheriff's office lease to the... When I came up with a million ninety two thousand remaining, I added in the entire sheriff's office lease to the end of the lease period. So I've counted it again here. So that number, that bottom line.
One ninety two needs to come out.
That needs to come out, yeah. So that would reduce that.
Okay.
By the one ninety two, because I've already accounted for elsewhere.
So we're a hundred, we're only uh.
A hundred.
Hundred eighty thousand. No.
A hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, a hundred thousand.
Right.
Hundred six.
But that's spending all of it.
And like, like I said, you know. Unless things really go sour, I know we're not in the crystal ball business, but this is what we've been doing for about twelve years. I mean, so we make the best projections we can. These are fluid documents. Situation changes, you know, uh, like the year we had two hurricanes. You know, uh, hopefully we won't have, no one accounted for COVID and all this, all that it brought about. But I will say it's, it's paid off. We collected more than it's hurt us. Uh, we're gonna be spending some of that money. And unless we're out writing checks. Between now and December thirty first, you're gonna have a new board. To deal with. That may not see these things, you know, as the same priorities. So are any of these, which is what I was saying, the things that we know we need to do? Do them. Let's put the bids out, let's put the ARP, let's make it happen. Let's get the commitments. We know we need the fleet service and building forever. Uh, let's do it. You know, let's put the bids out and, you know. If prices change in the next four, five, six months, maybe, well, maybe we can, when you're doing the bid and we're looking at it, we can, we can capitalize on some of that when it does come about. But uh. I, I, what I'm sitting here looking at, the asterisk ones. Uh, to me, following that category. Let's get started on it. Uh. Sooner than later, to me. I have to get some of the other fellows here to agree with me.
And it would just also have to be coordinated with the cash flow.
Right.
So it might not be, we might not have the money next month, but by the end of fiscal year, we would have had collections possibly for.
Well, we start the process. We can still start the process and make it happen. Otherwise, this turns to a county project that takes. Well, I mean, I don't want to say a county, just a typical government project, thanks for everything coming through the issue. But I'm just, I'm just trying to get the big picture of our money pots, what we've got coming up. And as.
The other.
Mr. Boebert pointed out, we all need to be very mindful of that. All these requests we're looking at are those ones from just this year. And uh.
And then just one last area of funding would be the unincorporated tax district.
True.
And those listed there were the requests from EMS fire, well, fire really, because it has to relate to a hundred percent fire.
Now, let me ask you something along those lines there as it pertains to Mr. Zink's projects. And some of that money available to make some of these improvements to these fire stations that are in the unincorporated area?
It may be.
For some reason that it wouldn't be? Well, I'm, I'm, I understand that.
Just need an allocation.
Do what?
We just need an alloc- allocation.
I can give you one. So he had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars going out. Mr. Zink, how much of that was uh? The unincorporated areas?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I mostly heard, I just couldn't hear a single thing was.
Fire stations, about a hundred thousand dollars. So six, between fire station sixteen, twelve and fifteen, uh, a hundred thousand of the seven fifty.
Now, location of all three of these, it gotta be unincorporated.
That would just be sixteen and fifteen, so sixty thousand.
That's what I'm saying, unincorporated fire station.
Six, sixty thousand.
But we do have a fire, fire does get expense to that fund as well. So I would think any fire station repairs would be able to qualify to be used under.
Fire, that's what it's all about.
Incorporated or unincorporated areas.
So they serve the unincorporated area as well.
And it's a fire station, so.
But the funds are collected for the unincorporated is what we're looking at here, right?
It's correct, probably unincorporated.
Far, far the unincorporated districts, not the city.
Not the city fire station.
Not incorporated, unincorporated districts.
Fire stations that service the city.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Well, yeah. This is all.
Yeah. So how many stations do uh?
Mushbluff is unincorporated, so twelve covers the month.
Yeah. It does, yeah, it does cover some of the unincorporated as well with the, it's that mushbluff.
How was that, well?
Okay, but it's located within the city limits.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that works.
It's around about city limits.
Two, two speed. Sheet it up of the zones.
Yes.
It's follow.
All right. I think at this point right now. We need to take a look at. What we can effectively make happen in the next year. And commit to that. I think much beyond that commitment. Kidnour cells. Realistically, to me, uh, like I said, uh, and in course during the course of the year. You know as well as I do, something comes up, you know, maybe we'll be fortunate not to have any major hurricane events. Uh, but if we do, then. Things change, but outside of that, let's, let's commit to what we can. What we can do within the next year or so, because. At this time next year. You have a new board looking at it. Unless we've got contracts in hand, I mean, it's not to say that we can't pencil it in, say, well, this is what we, where we think it should be going. But needs and the walks and all are gonna change, you know, like we're just doing it this year. So with that in mind. Let's look at the uh. Let's look at our uh. Purple funds request. So when I'm looking at public works, for example, this is one point two billion, this is a three year commitment.
Correct.
We're looking at four hundred thousand dollars a year. Next year, they may want to go six hundred thousand. Uh. I mean, we can. Definitively say, you know, so she will understand, so she can make her budgeting and her scheduling logistics work. That, is that fair to say? Is this would be something that would be four hundred thousand our year or is this? Is it equally?
The board can commit funds, even though it's not going to be spent in the current fiscal year.
I know, but.
By board action, it can be committed.
Does it stay committed?
It would require board actions.
That's my whole point.
Correct, back to reverse it, correct.
That's the whole point, sir. So I, I don't, I don't feel the need to commit every dollar at this moment. In fact, I personally don't have any intention of doing it. Uh. Things change. So this one point two billion, what are you looking at in the, in as far as dirt road stabilization products you're gonna be able to handle in the course of the year?
Yeah, that's just it. I mean, we wouldn't be able to do much more than a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in addition to all of our regular maintenance anyway. So we couldn't, I mean, we could, if we needed to buckle down and figure it out, we would, but ultimately it would take.
You say that, are you saying three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand?
Three hundred or four hundred thousand. We did three hundred and fifty thousand this year since we approved this SPOLOST. And it took, just because of supply and demand and being, getting the material in, actually hurt.
We can allocate, we can look at four hundred now.
Yes, sir.
And that, that's where I'm talking about going. You know, uh. We're spending centavos, man. Sort of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back up to the uh CCSO. I understand the, I understand the premium pay, I understand the additional vehicles that we're committing to. Uh, this is the, this is the expense for seven hundreds, the cost for the three years. And so obviously, we're committing to that, to me. That is something that's now sort of, as I understand it, you know, way the ordering and the process and works. And we gotta get it in sooner than later. Are we gonna be talking about these same vehicles again next year that never came in? Two tasers. Seventy? We're gonna be the Oprah taser sheriff? Everything is a taser.
That's, that's the investigators patrol courthouse inject.
Seventy?
Well, you always have to have two or three on the shelves to replace the swab.
I understand, I just. They don't have one now?
Jail has two tasers for the entire jail.
Rob doesn't need that many tasers to play, but he'd be dangerous.
Um, patrol courthouse, they, they have current tasers, whether. I think. Um, it's an older model taser and they're not serviceable. They don't make replacement parts for many days now.
I understand, but they have still. Make your eyes roll back again for a while. I'm just saying, do we, uh, seventy is a, is a lot at one time. The reason I say that, so it's kind of like the vehicles. You know, I don't know how, what the lifespan of a taser is, but we get all up, we, we restock everybody with brand new tasers. We know what's gonna happen. The ones they got, they gonna be put aside.
Well, either that or we, we could either donate them ourselves.
Okay, uh. So what, what would be, what would be the number of tasers that we can really get by with and that we can really? And we're looking at, you know, over the course of the next year, obviously. You know, instead of trying to buy them all at one time, which is what we're looking at here. What's the lifespan of your tasers? Five years, six years, anybody know? Uh.
And, and Sean says.
They wanted the sheriff to have a microphone, I forgot.
Sorry, are that Sean? I was asking him, he said realistically about five years for a taser.
Okay. So. Where's the, where's the greatest need for the, what, I mean, what do you, what would you have most likely, patrol or?
Patrol, yes, sir. Uh, I'd say patrol and courthouse.
Okay, I'll add to that.
They currently have to be rotated out to the jailer, but the ones that are still serviceable.
Uh, let me ask you a stupid question. How many we have, how many we have people we have in the courthouse? Roughly.
Currently, there's seven. There shouldn't be ten. There, there's funded for ten.
And then you said the courthouse and where patrol?
Patrol and uh.
How many's on patrol? Roughly.
Patrol here sixteen, fourteen. Funded for twenty four. Actual patrol officers. I'm sorry, but that would be twenty eight for patrol.
Okay, all right. Can we look at it this way? Uh.
Could you give about a forty this year?
Yes. Or half of it, thirty five, just split it in half. I mean.
Yes, sir, we could.
This is one of these things that, this is one of those equipment type things that need to be kind of.
House like.
Like the vehicles, stuff like that.
I'm aware of that.
And if seventy, if seventy would basically give everybody one, right?
That would take care of the patrol in the jail.
Well, if we shorten it up.
If we could do like half this year and half, you know, look at, look at the.
You'll have more, you'll have more needs. I would say what, what, you know, if we put it on like twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, then you're starting to just get in the replacement program.
Which is really what we need to do.
Uh, that's, I, I'm just saying prospectively, we talk about these things, they're just like the. Vehicles last year kind of, of course, I'm not blaming anybody, just life got in the way of it. You know, keep these things in mind prospectively and, you know, start budgeting them in. So let's look at twenty five of those bad boys. And look at, you know. That's eighty seven thousand five hundred.
Five work for you? We'll make it work.
Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate that attitude. We're gonna need it. Transport vans. Well, now, let me address that just a moment. Now, we're mostly all the folks over to the courthouse, right?
At the courthouse in Glen County currently.
All right, let's talk about that in just a moment. We're talking about funding, Robster over there with the jailhouse, we hoping we gonna cut out all that housing up in Glen County unless there's. Realistically.
Yes, sir.
So let's look at one transport van. Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
I, I T body dash cam stores three years.
That's three years worth of storage for the video.
I understand. What do we? I, I, I know enough to be dangerous, but that don't stop me.
You probably know more than I do at that point.
Well, I, I do know that when you put video and sound together, it takes a tremendous amount of uh space.
Yes, sir.
I don't know what we got currently managing all that. Y'all didn't really think it's gonna be a short meeting, did you? We can do another, but I'm flexible.
And Lewis could probably pitch in on this.
Oh, there he is. Lewis, what, what are we, what are we looking at here? Going up to my car, you done St. Clair, she gonna be throwing something at you. She'd be looking at me.
We probably, we could probably come up with some money if we bump the stenture up a couple degrees.
Yes, I'm not. He'd be all right.
I'm not familiar with this specific project, but I could tell you, just like you said, audio, video, streaming, it takes a lot of.
Who does that would be, who manages your?
Dane has.
Oh, Dane. Dane got three hundred and five thousand of it, where's Dane?
I can't answer that.
Uh, what kind of, is this replacing storage or increasing storage or expand, I mean, what, does anybody know?
John, sure. Is it additional storage?
Yes, it is. And, and I happened to talk to Dane today, unrelated to this.
Give it a microphone.
Yes, sir. So it is additional storage and it is cloud based storage.
Okay.
Okay.
So they also. It's okay, it's all right, Sheriff. It's also, that number does include purchasing new body cams for the deputies as well. So I don't know how many is in that number, but.
I started saying, I was gonna ask you that, do this, do we currently have body cams on everybody?
On patrol, yes. We want to put them on investigators.
Uh, thank.
As well as, uh, we're looking at expanding and putting some in the jail. So that they could, in, in a situation where you get into where there's gonna be physical contact, they can grab one and put it on when they go into the cell block.
Yeah, yes, sir. To follow up for the sheriff, and when I spoke today, today, unrelated, looking at animal control potentially having body cam capability. This is hardware, software, storage and law enforcement, unlike animal control, has very exacting state requirements for that data management and storage uh under law. So it's, it's a fairly high end requirement.
What, what is that requirement? I mean, is it?
What, what is that requirement? I mean, is it?
It's just a state retention schedule that certain, certain incidents have to be manned for a certain period of time. Some can be deleted.
I'm sure if it's evidentiary or.
Yeah, sir.
It could be, you gotta have, you know, you might have to hold two, five or ten years, never know.
There's some of them that you have to hold in depth.
So then, Mike, so let me get this straight. So, we're looking at. This was gonna bring us up to the body cameras and expanded stores that we need?
Yes.
You don't know.
But I, I'm, I'm relying on Dane and the figures I put out.
Now, I mean that, yes. Well. Clarify that. Just clarify, make sure Dane, this is, you know, this is what we're doing here, that this is gonna. I think body cameras are important for us and the world.
I, I definitely think moving forward.
That is, yeah. So, let's just leave that as it be in my mind. We'll talk about, we'll go back over it. Everybody else can call me whatever they want to. I heard you. Alright. No, I hadn't, uh, ignored it. Well, yeah, I have. Premium pay, one point two million. It's gonna be a hard nut. We're trying to do all our payrolls. We're trying to expand. We're trying to get equipment, uh. We, we, you know, we tried to give out some stuff. I, to me, I wanna put that on hold right now and see, kinda finish going through some of these others and see what we got. Administrative four-year remodel fire department. This is the one, uh.
Chairman, we actually reassessed this, um, today and just hadn't updated the slide. So, that really, we've dropped that down to a hundred thousand. We really felt, so that was very much overstated.
Well, I'm just gonna ask the sheriff, will he put a go paddle in there? I mean, not sheriff, chief. So, we're at a hundred thousand on that?
Yeah. Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. And Chief and I have up here, we've been kinda collaborating on future of, you know, both wrestling with the fact that you wanna get rid of properties that are aging. Um, that may have some value. Fire headquarters may be one of those properties. And with the fact that we have a SLO state-funded E O C, uh, to be built directly across from it, we think it might be the best use of that SLO facility to house fire rescue with us. So, you bring their administrative section over into that new building, which gets you out of old real estate, and that would be a perfect parking lot.
That also brings in my mind that whole corner. So, yeah, I didn't know what you were thinking.
Yeah, we have discussed that many times.
You know, really, the only thing we would have there would be planning and zoning, uh, library, I don't care if it's G D I.
And planning and zoning would be going into the resiliency center.
They are.
Yes, sir. That's the plan.
Now, remember, we've also committed funds to reproof that library.
That would be true.
Well, we've already done it.
I'm sorry?
We've already reroute that library.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, that.
Got a thirty-year roof on it.
Well, you know. And some of that excess property.
Elections. Yeah.
Alright, somebody gonna have to speak up.
Elections. Elections office.
Yes, sir.
Relocate.
For where? Oh, two, that right in Amazon, I forgot.
Yes, sir.
But it wouldn't preclude us of looking at what that corner would be worth, and we might could, you know, build, you know, just some down the road.
And that's, that's something that we're also trying to take a look at within that facilities master plan that we talked about within the strategic planning. That's something that we're gonna be fully encompassing. There's several different buildings we're gonna look at, office space requirements, future facility requirements, upgrades, rehabilitation to those facilities. So, that's gonna be a very comprehensive document we look for.
Got a lot of major projects.
Yeah.
Construction projects going on, looking at.
That's correct.
And, you know, I, I've never been involved with one that, you know, three clients from myself that, well, she got halfway into it. It's like, oh, we could've done this, or, oh, we should've done that, but. That, that being said, uh, let's move on. We're looking at a hundred thousand. I'm not sure what quantifits and adapters are, but. What are they?
We can use them like if we go into residence. Um, instead of wearing our SCBA tanks, you can just put them into your mask and that, so it sorta help us out with that.
Cool. So, do you want now?
For an example, if COVID, if COVID was happening to break out again.
Oh, this is, this is.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's what we talked to you about. We had our budget here.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Just say, so we can breathe without walking into a situation that we gonna be breathing somebody else's contagious poos.
That sounds good.
I got it.
That's it.
I support it. Y'all, how long you hold your breath, can't even, I wouldn't be in there long. Body armor.
Yeah, so, working with the chief, working with Chief Parsons for EMS, um, we believe that we have got to take a more holistic approach to active shooter. One of the capabilities that we do not have, and it's a huge vulnerability, is we don't have the ability to sortie in or emergency medical personnel that come in on life squad to an active scene. Let's assume the sheriff's office has secured an area and it's called a warm zone. It's not an active firefight going on. If they've got injured, we need to push in medical personnel. To do that, we need to protect them. So, they need exterior worn body armor that's gonna provide the ability to have a rescue task force, and I think it's a critical requirement.
So, this would be through the EMS firefighter.
Yes, sir.
People go in and retrieve the public, whoever.
Yes, sir.
And this is something that more and more firefighters and EMS personnel are being shot at nationwide.
They don't have guns.
Exactly. And, and I think it's paramount that we protect them.
I, I don't disagree.
So, are we looking at the vests?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This is labeled marked, so they're, they're not distinct, they're, they're distinguished as being medical. They are medical. Example, it's, you know, it could be a, a red vest like firewares. It's gonna say it. It's an exterior worn. And they don't have to be in on it all the time, but when they go into these calls where they've got an active threat, and it doesn't have to be like in a school, it could be anywhere. They have the capability because it would be on the squad at the ready for them to dawn that, put it on, and be able to support the requirement.
I'd throw the word vest in there. Everybody understands what that is.
Yes, sir.
Instead of body armor.
Yes, sir.
But I'm with you. Alright, moving on.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Sir, safe. Don't be leaving yet. To me, this is, this eight-hundred system is what, well, we started. Uh, we start with all this radio and, uh, computers and stuff. I mean, it's been, you know, we all wanted to get there. Saint Mary's jumped out ahead of us. Uh, now they're gonna be behind, in a sense, but, uh, other systems will be over. But. In my mind, when I look at what we're doing here, the rating, the towers that we put up, we brought our V H F system up to a, a system that operates as well as the V H system's gonna operate. One, two, it's critical for redundancy. Uh, in the event something happens with the eight-hundred side. Two, in, when you have a massive emergency situations, you got. Public works can be on the V H F system doing, I mean, we got, we just got double. You're gonna have a traffic problem, radio traffic issue. I don't know anything about it, but like I said, that, that stopped me. My whole point is, you know, we were, we were building the foundation to move into the eight-hundred system. Cause I'm pretty certain that we're not gonna get a G eight summit in Saint Mary's where the government's gonna come and build it out of life for us. And I think that's, I think, and as I've had it explained to me more than once, we're the pothole in the I ninety-five road for radio communications. Uh, finishing this up is, is to me major. So, does anybody have a problem with the one four six million? Good. That's total cost?
Y- yes, sir. So, that really, and I want, I just want if I can, Mr. Chairman, to that point, this is to take care of that migration, as the chairman said. All of the foundation, everything you've invested in today, new infrastructure, new towers, the state-of-the-art simulcast over I P V H S system, it doesn't go away. You retain that capability with V H F, and remember, the sheriff's office and EMS and fire are heading into Charlton and Brantley, running mutual aid, and they're coming over. They're gonna be on V H F. The system gives us capacity and failover when we need it, so we'll always have it. And we take care of roads and public works with that same capability. As we move in and look at the one point six million, that directly goes to the mobiles and the handhelds, both for the sheriff's office and for fire rescue. Why one point six million? Because they're expensive. This is not your daddy's radio, which is the nine hundred dollar V H F. You know, Kenwood Radio is an example. These are very expensive radios that allow them to, at the touch, move themselves between bands. They can go into eight hundred, they can go to V H F. So, it's a high-end capability, but, but a single radio in that capability is gonna run you five, six thousand dollars easily. So.
With that being said, now, these radios, we'd be able to interact with anybody coming through.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll, we'll, they'll be able to, as they work either into Nassau, go up, or they come here. We will have shared frequencies and capability that we have never enjoyed for this community. We, we finally move into the twenty-first century. Yes, sir.
Are we there, ready for this now?
We're ready. We're ready. You're gonna have.
So, you need to purchase them now?
Uh, no, sir. Timeline, we've got time. Why do we have time? We have time because the old system, which is a new system, isn't going away. So, we take a calculated number of how long we take, we think it takes, once we go through the procurement process, that those radios, from a supply chain perspective, are going to arrive here. So, we work with the sheriff's office, we work with fire, we work with the vendors, and we work with procurement to determine when we put that out and when we're going out to make the purchase. So, we'll, we'll time that so that we know when we migrate and we turn it on and it's tested and your eight-hundred is running, that simultaneously, those radios are in the hand of the public safety first responders.
Alright, let's look at it this way. Push timeframe on, on utilizing these radios.
So, this project, go ahead, Bill.
The goal is, is to have the eight-hundred system online and fully tested operational by the end of August of twenty twenty-three. And that's with no delays.
And that's a new three-hundred-foot tower that will be at the Groce Road Fire Headquarters.
Well, that's true.
What's the lifespan of these arrangements?
Ten to fifteen years.
You gonna put that parking lot around the tower or?
It won't be on the tower. It, it's actually going over near the gas pumps.
Okay.
Alright. Hello. Build up. Yeah, it's got an asset here. We're still currently applying for grants. This main number may shrink to five hundred. Uh, this is all part of that grant and everything else that we've got going, so it's like.
Yes, sir. So, C D B G through the state has invested three point six million dollars already. We have that. You're taking a circa nineteen seventy-eight building and basically completely redoing it, refurbishing it, new roof, everything. Um, so electrical, so there's a lot of build-out on the interior to build this up into a design that fits the need of the county and the cities for two things. One is your day-to-day building out your resiliency, uh, mission for this community, which is hugely important. And it's, by the way, where you're going to see the funding coming from, from the state and the federal government as we move forward. We have great opportunities there, and we need to build a resilient community and recovery. After Irma, we had nowhere to go, and that's what the building will perform. The nine hundred thousand covers the fact that we have a gap where the, where the federal dollars cannot be used for certain things. You can't furnish it. You can't put in I T systems. You can't go buy software. You can't hang a monitor. You can't put in a sound system. You can't put in servers that provide storage. So, the C D B G will not fund that. That's why that nine hundred is necessary.
Alright. Anybody got any problems with that? Now, the Saint Mary's, as I understand, we've had a history of some radio communication issues when you get down in Saint Mary's. Not, not just us, as in our fire rescue sheriff's office. Them, you know, during events, when they're fixed right on the water, uh. This mush bluff radio upgrade, as I understand it, uh. Would eliminate those issues.
Yes, sir. So, in essence, I want you to think about this. You've got four sites today. Waverly, Brown Town, Woodbine, three brand-new two-hundred-and-fifty-foot towers. The fourth site, which is the current tower located fire headquarters, is only a hundred and eighty feet and it's falling apart. We didn't have enough money in the first radio project for V H F to replace the tower. We went out, we were successful, we got C D B G funding. That's your fourth big site, and it'll have a microwave. The Saint Mary's site will be site five. Site five, the sheriff's office today doesn't run on it and can't take advantage of that Saint Mary's mush bluff tower site. In a cooperative agreement with Saint Mary's, we, we go into this together. Cooperative agreement, we go into this together so that we get the site, we get the capacity, we get another microwave failover hop, and we get more frequency coverage plus the three-hundred-foot tower to ensure that downtown Saint Mary's and out into the county's areas, out Cumberland Harbor area, point Peter, that we've got better coverage and more. Yes, sir.
Coastal, all through there.
It'll also take him part of Cumberland Island.
Yes.
The, um, it would also, to me, which I would think to be important, is we would definitely be able to communicate better with our friends and neighbors in Saint Mary's.
Yes.
They would, it would allow them the opportunity, uh, to become, we all operating under one system.
Yes, sir. So, this, this makes us whole as a community, and at the end of the day, the goal is, is that it's gotta be seamless. No one cares when they call nine-one-one, other than they're gonna get help, they're gonna get support. But to do that, the system's gotta be whole, it's gotta be interoperable, and it's gotta talk. Today, it's a patch, it's a yaggy antenna, and none of that is meeting the needs of both the county and the city of Saint Mary's.
Okay. Anybody object or question? Alright. Now, we're gonna move into the, uh, mobile command vehicle. This was, uh. Sell them out.
Yes, sir. Be making a attempt. So, I'm gonna go back. I'm gonna go back to, that is a whole response to critical incidents, okay? And they don't have to be the active shooter. It could be a large industrial accident. It could be a tanker that's on.
If it's ministry, we might have that problem.
Yes, sir. It, it could be anything. An aircraft goes down here, which we've experienced. There's a number of things that require us to have the ability to push out and establish command on scene in support of a first response effort. It could be an all-in. It could be public works. It could be fire, law enforcement, EMS. So, there's all hazard scenarios that really require communities to have the ability and a mobile capability to send out and establish on-scene command. Today, we don't have it. Um, and, and there's pieces of that that we try to do when we get to a location, but, but even since Irma, the things that have happened, we've just not had that capability. When the sher- sheriff's office ran search and rescue for the last time that we had a, a Alzheimer's dementia patient that ended up found dead, uh, at a wooded location. We had to call for and wait on Bryan County to send a mobile command vehicle down here. That's not acceptable. We need to have our own capability, and that capability needs to work with our radios and our system to give us the ability to get out and do the job, sir.
Why Bryan County? What about Glen County? Nassau County?
Glen County didn't have anything operational, and, and Bryan County took one, to your point, sir, uh, Mr. Brandt, they took one under the guise of they were gonna have regional support to everybody. Well, that's not quite so. Um, you know, sometimes when you go out and you say that, it's not so in practice, and, and it's, it was a huge delay to get that asset down here.
You'd be surprised how many times we've countered that. What we hear is not what happens.
Yes, sir.
Regional sounds good with your settlement.
It does. It sounds good when you get grant money. It does. It sounds good when you get grant money, and they got grant-
But the thing about it is, more importantly, this would be a mobile command vehicle that would be available for countywide, whether it's St. Mary's, Kingsland, Dover Bluff, that we're not waiting on.
Yes, sir.
Whatever the incident may or may not be.
Describe this 420-
Yeah, so we had two options. As we evaluated best-of-breed, what made the most sense? What gave you the ability to get out into the field the quickest and have the most capability?
Pictures.
I'm sorry? I don't have any pictures. So one of the things we looked at is the same folks that build the, that are Pierce and frontline, that build our fire engines, are also in the business of building these. This is a vehicle, basically, it's like it is a Ford Transit, high-roofed fan, fully built out, telescoping mast for antenna, for camera, and then you've got your three workstations in it that allow you to have full connectivity from an IT standpoint for incident action plans, information, coordinating everything that you need to do, any resources you need to bring to bear. And this is something that's in the bay, like a fire engine as an example. It's on its shore power, you disconnect it, you get in it, and you go, and you get on scene. The trailer option that we did explore is got a lot of moving parts. One of those is you've got to have a prime mover, you've got to have a big truck. And that's another capital expense that we have to-
About $100,000.
Yes, sir. So that's what we're looking at, is something like a trans van.
I like the idea of self-contained unit.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I just wanted a little more-
Yes, sir.
... for what we're talking about here, and the capabilities of what it can and cannot do.
Correct, sir.
And, you know, the antenna part of it is absolutely connect with our towers better.
It's radiant, yes, sir. It's fully up. So if we got on scene and support, we'll give you the example, this is the sheriff's office. And the sheriff's office has got an incident that is going to be protracted in nature, it's going to run longer than the normal type of call. You get on scene, if they want to park a deputy in that vehicle and put them on radio, they take over on-scene communications where dispatch is still running beans, bread, and bullets for everything else going on in the county. You isolate down, and you can communicate, and-
You don't have any particular channel at all?
It'll fully interoperate.
There on site, and it's not utilizing the day-to-day operations of the 911 center, if you will.
Yes, sir. They continue on with their mission while you get on-scene command and control.
All right. Can you sell it?
He comes close.
All right. Now, bubble matter again.
Yes, sir. So one of the issues that developed for our clinic's capability, and this is focusing on what we deliver both to our employees, but it could have other utility purposes. We were caught in a situation in the pandemic and COVID, and we did try to approach this in CARES Act, but the money went into other things. We had to force everybody that had COVID into the clinic, potentially exposing those that didn't have it, including staff. So we needed something to do two things. We needed the ability to both vaccinate externally, not bring them in the clinic, and exposing them to somebody that might be sick. And we needed the ability to also be out doing testing, where somebody thinks they may be symptomatic for COVID-19. This isn't going away. There are things that continue to move in the modern age around. And what we did for our clinic is, I literally popped up a tent in 95-degree weather in high humidity, and I-
And that was short notice.
Yeah, and I asked that staff to go sit outside in a folding chair and basically conduct COVID-19 tests and interviews. And I just, that was-
Be down there getting tested, and Melissa came out, it was hot. I mean, it was nasty. Folks were sitting out there in the cars-
Yes, sir.
They're running, they're standing in the windows.
We put signs out in parking spaces, trying to get somebody to remain in their vehicle, because we just didn't have the capability.
But that's just one example, you know, keep it in mind. This brings up the thought as far as our Department of Public Health, Department of Health. I mean, there, I mean, there's opportunities, I would think, somewhere for grants for things like this. Either still, I would imagine, I would let it, we looked at-
It's possible, yes, sir. It's possible.
Okay.
And I'm happy to explore that.
I would like, I would like to see if you can get Julie, or, and, you know, things may be coming up. Hopefully, we don't have anything that makes us wish we already had it just yet, but, oh. All right. I'm going to just- All right. Tell me what audio and video integration six location mean.
Yeah, so this room, obviously, the red room over there, and the EOC, all that equipment's becoming antiquated. It's several years old now. And then, obviously, with the pandemic, uh, we've determined now we need new equipment to accommodate hybrid meetings without hitting feedback and those different types of technical difficulties we keep experiencing. Luckily, we've got Scott on board, and he's got a lot of AV background, and he's helped us work out a lot of the kinks we've been dealing with. But at the same time, the equipment's becoming antiquated, and it's just needs to be refreshed, too.
Well, you say several years old.
Yes.
That don't sound adequate.
Well, in technology, it is.
I know what your world is too. I get it.
Yep. Rising level, you know, 10 times a day that this is antiquated, yeah, that I need to upgrade about 10 times a day.
Yeah, but, yeah, no. I got two servers at my office, but I hate getting on that front line cutting edge, because there's always glitches there. I don't want to be the beta site. I want to be out for a year or two.
Right.
Anyhow, audio/video integration, and that's for three sites.
Yeah, that would get us, uh, this room, the room outside, or the executive session room we go to-
Office room.
Uh, the old courtroom, and then all the offices at the EOC. I say offices, the meetings. The old courtroom, yes.
So then it'd be one, two, three here.
Yes.
And then the EOC.
Correct.
Ascension.
Yes.
So it's four, four basic areas. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Claire.
I'm asking if it's possible for Louis, maybe even Scott, to provide clarification about how that would impact our meetings. For example, today, we've, you know, had a lot of focus on making sure we come to microphones. Yes, this would help with this situation? Yes, no?
Yes, it would help with this situation.
So beneficial for more than just-
Yeah, right now, we've actually got a hybrid solution going on. This was supposed to be a standalone equipment for like, if we had to do like a-
This one here?
Right here, front of the bench, uh, there's a table with a piece of equipment on it that has microphones, like the one right there in front of you, and the one right over here.
What's this one called?
Those were originally purchased to be standalone equipment. So when we had Bravo go out to Cheston, Georgia, like in the middle of a hurricane or something, that would allow them to communicate back directly to us through video cameras and directly through mics. So we had to set that up-
You'd be doing that at the EOC instead of here?
Well, I mean, that would be, that's mobile. We could take that anywhere. That's what it was designed to be, is for a mobile solution. But we've had, go ahead.
If that goes away, then we have no hybrid meeting here. It's a Band-Aid that we cobble together. If they have to go away for a hurricane, we no longer broadcast over YouTube or Webvan.
Which brings up the other question. I guess, does everybody feel that they want to continue or enhance the ability to do the YouTube and live broadcast of things going on? I mean, if you do, that's great, you know, then this makes sense. If you don't, then that-
You just about got to. Sounds like a good idea.
Doesn't bother me. I mean, I, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
You want to log in?
Huh?
Want to log in? See what's going on?
I guarantee y'all won't let me log in next year. I guarantee it'd be somebody sitting there trying to log in, pull the plug. No, I agree. You know, it's, uh, we've talked about it for years. We're this far to have a rabbit hole. So let's just see what we got here. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, sir.
This is, uh, about you, Mr. Zane. I know we've got a bunch of money on air conditioners we did already.
Yes, sir.
Is this-
How many air conditioners we looking at here?
Uh, all of them, except for the major, the commercial units.
This one is good.
We have over 215.
We just did one up here. I know it's about a year or two ago.
Yeah, we have over 215, uh, air conditioners throughout the county. And most of those are 15 to 20 years old.
250?
215 plus. It's probably closer to 250.
Man, we need to fire some people back. That's way too many.
Yeah, the majority of our buildings are cooled by residential split units and not commercial units, commercial package units. The only ones that are are the big buildings, such as Commissioner Building, courthouse, jail. Most of our smaller buildings are zone-heated through commercial, or residential split units. And over the years, we haven't replaced them. We've been piecemealing them together and trying to keep them running.
You will find that most have those new units won't last near as long.
With the new technologies that they have, and they're able to-
We'll be getting 10, 15 years out of the newest.
I believe-
Well, they'll be a whole lot more efficient.
Yep, whole lot more efficient, cool a whole lot better, keep the employees a whole lot more happy. And they will last just as long, and they're getting new coatings on their, on their condenser units, which will minimize the rust and the leaks that are happening on them.
Which brings up a question to me. Does anybody know how we get billed for air conditioning, for electricity at a county? I know how, I know how it works from a residential, I know how it works for commercial. You pay on availability for your commercial, meaning, for example, if they look at my usage and consumption last year, and I've used 50 kilowatts. So they're gonna say, well, and it was July. Well, July is much cooler than it was last year, and I only used 30. I'm paying for 50, because according to the power company, believe you me, we had a knockdown record about 30 years ago, when they explained to me. Anyway-
We're not on a flat bill rate, a flat rate.
So we're, I thought, I would thought, as government, we're based on consumption.
Consumption, correct.
So I would, I know with my house, when I had, you know, when I had my units replaced, my power bill, it was half.
Yeah, and that's part of it, with our, installing the new LED lights and the new air conditioners, we're seeing a drastic reduction in the energy consumption for each one of the, each one of the buildings.
Okay, what is touchless retrofit?
So the touchless retrofit, when we get, had this new janitorial contract come through, we were able to outfit each one of the buildings that had the janitorial contract on it with touchless hand dryers and touchless paper towelers and soap dispensers. What we want to do is also go through and update that into the touchless, touchless toilets, urinals, touchless faucets, so that we are minimizing the number of times we're touching things, spreading contamination, and minimizing the amount of opportunity that you have to contaminate a building from different touches.
You're talking about the battery-operated type systems or everything?
Yep, battery-operated flush valves, battery-operated faucets, eventually battery-operated door closures.
Correct. That's a good one.
The batteries, the batteries are, right now, for all of the paper towel dispensers and the soap dispensers, the janitors and facilities are going through and doing the battery replacements. They're looking, they're lasting about three months based on usage, anywhere from three to six, depending on the buildings.
So what's this will change? Does that have more batteries to replace?
It'll, it'll change, one, it'll change the aging flush valves that we have that are, if you look at any of our bathrooms throughout the county that are green and brown, that have been rusting out and that we're replacing anyway.
That's water.
Correct. This'll update all of those so that, one, you're not flushing it manually or with your foot, which is what most people are doing right now, to when you stand up, it'll flush for you.
Sweet. I'm not a soul gunner, this one, to be honest with you, but I got four compadres up here. It might feel different.
Neither one of my hands are broken.
And you can back up, speed would you let them?
I'm just about, I can get it up so high now.
I'm not into this one.
No problem.
I think we've got enough projects for you to oversee. I don't know.
This is an easy one.
Hell, they are.
Thank you.
Would you play them? A coroner, I remember discussing this somewhere, was it not in our budget thing, Nancy, as that was the problem? And I know there was issues with the elections, continuation of fare-free rides. I would like to, has somebody given us any numbers? Has there been an increase in the utilization of that? I mean, are we just making ourselves feel good without anything coming out of it?
This is less than it was pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, they used those to transport seniors to the senior center predominantly. Now, it's more of a medical use. And we started the program in December, and we've had 1,200 rides in that period of time. I haven't gotten last month's numbers back, so we're going to be over 1,200 at this point.
How much comparatively, yeah, logically, do you look for you to, I have no idea.
Previous, the previous average was about 3,000 rides a year.
Has the availability improved? I know that was two, three months ago. There were some issues about being short drivers and not, you know, having, you know, certain days, more or two days a week, they would be available.
Just the logistics of use, I mean, you know, what?
We've only received one, one negative feedback in the six months that we've had the program up and running. So-
I'll try and hard, thank you.
There may be more. There may certainly be more, but only one that we've heard from that they've reached out.
And that issue was resolved, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Who also explained the four-tier expansion of internet services that, this would be the county library, Kingsland, I presume?
The county library at Gross Road, yes. They came through the, through the budget committee. I don't know that anybody is here to speak on their behalf. But it was a complete, the step one was a complete upgrade of their existing internet system at the library. Two was to create classrooms or classroom environment. Three is to provide where they could have meetings, internet meetings. And then four was to have a mobile vehicle that could provide-
Oh, I remember that.
Internet out in rural areas. Or we would purchase the vehicle and the equipment, and then they would take up the maintenance costs moving forward.
Well, we're gonna be paying for that, too. She's gonna play that pea shell game, wouldn't she? Yes, they'll have to add it to their budget. Shannon, did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah. Because of what's on there with the portable voting booths?
We weren't decided, we're not gonna be voting.
That's what I was kind of thinking, sitting behind there.
We're not. I don't have a problem with that. I understand the coroner, we've already kind of talked that out, the election booth, we understand. So you're okay.
And the elections, I just want to make sure I'm on the same page as Eric. You were for new election ballot marking devices? Is that the same thing you remember?
From what I recall, it was, you, your complete ask was 25, so that was, that was all.
Okay. Yeah. Because my, my numbers are just a little bit lower.
What do you mean?
Like, I would need the $25,000 if I had to buy new portable or new ballot marking devices, because now in general elections, we have to have so many more machines present, but our numbers aren't there yet.
So what you're telling me, you're requesting 25, but you may need 18?
Correct.
Well, we're not gonna get mad at you for spending less.
Well, I know. But I just wanted to make sure you and I were on the same page, so.
So you wanted to adjust that from 25 to 18, or 25 to 20, or 25 to what? What are you saying?
20. Yeah.
So, for 20. All right. Uh, how's everybody feel about, just to, I know we, we heard it, how does anybody feel about the continuation of the free rides through 2026? Obviously, that is what, we're looking at three and a half years. So that would be, is this $40 per dollar?
Yeah. It was $10,000.
It was $10,000 for the county, and then we're also in partnership, I failed to mention, with the city of St. Mary's. They contributed $10,000 as well, and we spoke with them today. Their intent is to continue the program with us. Now, of course, it has to go to city council for vote, but that's, that's the intent of their staff, is to move forward, requesting continuation.
Yeah. I told you what Granny said about intentions.
Sure.
So far, that's been a positive program. So far, that's been a positive program, same thing.
Yes, that, that program, uh, won, uh, state a, a national award for.
One thing I would point out, though, we're looking at really, I'm, I'm trying to put this on an annualized basis. We're looking at about eleven five a year. That's what I'm looking at.
What, what do we fund the CRC, cause they put this program off, correct?
Yeah.
Transportation program, what do we fund them? Normal.
You think I'm reading your lips?
They, the, the program is, is primarily funded through GDOT, uh, through, through federal highway, because we're not a large enough to have what's called an MPO. So we're considered, considered rural, so they have a rural transit system that's funded partially by, by GDOT. And then the county takes on certain costs, I believe, is that paid for through dues?
Yeah.
CRC dues. But that dollar amount I don't have at hand, but.
It's actually state statute with that required, the requirement that pay a membership.
Right, yep.
It's a different standard on program.
All, all participating counties and the coastal region commission pay their dues. Population based dues, um, yeah.
Okay.
But this funds it through the whole, to three and a half years session.
Correct. And the current program, no matter where you live in the county, either incorporated or unincorporated, they'll pick you up and drop you off door to door with, with twenty-four hours notice.
Twenty-four hours? Well, that must have changed. So I recall, cause I know very well back, people talking about, you know, getting booked then or something, something, what they do different.
They had some issues when the city of St. Mary's tried to do their own system down there, they had some issues with three to four day waiting time and everything. But this system here is pretty, pretty accurate on the twenty-four hour system, that's all they require.
Okay, cause.
And most of, I, I serve on the CRC board, I'm kind of represented on there, so we can get it updated every month on transportation. It's not a profitable thing for the CRC, it is not profitable whatsoever. It costs way more than does, but, like I said, GDOT, GDOT and beds, that's important.
It's, it's really considered an essential service, those that require medical appointments that don't otherwise have transportation, it's, it's a lifesaver for those.
What are the hours of the signage?
My understanding is regular business hours, eight to five, uh, Monday to Friday.
You know, I, I was just wondering, you know, thinking about how, not, not that I'm against this, but if private enterprise wouldn't do a better job around, you know, having twenty-four seven access, I don't know how you would manage that, or, you know.
The thing about it is, this is free to the person.
Free?
Before we did the ten thousand donations, it was four dollars. It's a trip.
It's three dollars is, 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 it would be a minimum, but it would go up from there.
But a taxi cab to do the same job would cost you twenty-five dollars, right? It's a benefit to the citizens, a big benefit to the citizens.
Free, free, free.
Yep. Exactly.
Looks like it's forty thousand dollars.
Nothing's free. All right. What you got?
He did.
Library. You guys think about spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on a library that's gonna wanna tear down in five years?
What do we pay now to have Three R, Three Rivers Manusia Library for us?
It's about two hundred and sixty, two hundred and seventy thousand annually.
Yeah. That's what we're already paying out, two sixty, two seventy thou, you know, a year. And now we wanna add a hundred and thirty, it's one time payment, I'm sure, it's not annual, it's a one time payment, uh.
Was that, yeah, that's a good question, is that, what's that, what is this paying for?
That, that's the capital cost for the, for them to upgrade to the, the facility and purchase the vehicle.
Does the internet fees go up? I mean, are we going, are we changing our internet services? Are we just putting in new equipment? Is there a residual to this, is what I'm saying?
I, I, I can't speak to that.
I'd be interested to know what it, what it would be without the vehicle. They're just upgrading without a lot, without the people, or is this just for being?
No, that's, that's all in, uh, complete upgrade to this facility and, and the vehicle.
Yeah, I mean, I would be more interested to see it working than when I was.
W- w- I can.
I remember that, but what was that vehicle? And the answer is, I wonder if I looked.
Excuse me?
I think they had a slide in a bit.
Remember?
I could, I, just give me a moment, I could thought.
It's a big, full size van, maybe?
I'm not sold on the vehicle, are you?
I'm not sold on a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I, I got a stinking feeling that, that vehicle is probably a substantial forty, not to mention, you know, the operation of that vehicle.
Libraries are great, I totally support library system, but, you know, we've got other things in the county. One set right over there against the wall, that, that we've cut and cut and cut, and he's been gracious and works with his honor, and
Well, that's.
We have a representative here asking for this.
I think.
I have a breakdown of the cost that they asked for. Uh, tier one would be a complete rework of the entire IT network at, at the facility. Um, that's forty thousand dollars. Tier two would be a renovation of the library to, to create a computer lab. That's an additional thirty thousand dollars, so we're up to seventy total. The next phase would be twenty thousand more to create a conference and education lab for class, classroom and training.
I thought the thirty was to create rooms.
Uh, to, 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 tier two, I'll, I'll read it verbatim from what they, they sent, renovation of a section of the library to create, create a computer lab, which would increase the number of public access computers available for usage.
That's the thirty?
That's the thirty.
That's the computer lab.
Correct. And then tier three, which would be an additional twenty thousand, would be to create a conference and streaming education lab that would be utilized by anyone needing to run educational classes or training.
They've got two different rooms in that library, whenever you first enter, if you go to the left, that's a pretty large conference room that they have. That's the room they're talking about for educational training purposes, if you go in and you.
They use, they buy you that?
They use it for all kinds of different things right now, they do a lot of like their children's educational programs.
But, but it's utilized?
It is utilized, but I mean, that, I think they're trying to outfit it for any and all type purposes for IT, cause I don't think they have that capability right now, at least the last time I visited, they didn't have that, it's just an empty room. The other portion, it, whenever you go in, you go to the right, there's a lot of little booths that are kinda built out, like clothes booth, fixed wall booth. That's the computer lab, uh, kind of in addition to the computer lab portion that they're talking about. Right now, it's not really being used.
So it's forty thousand for IT?
We, uh, for a little while, we took care.
Oh, come on up here.
For a little while, we took.
All right, la, la, la.
For a little while, we took care of the, uh, the public library for them, and, uh, I can tell you that place was a disaster as far as their computer equipment went.
Oh, that's not one of them.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, you know, put it out there because they are.
But, but you brought it up, right?
What that?
You brought it up to Crane, right?
Well, we didn't put any more equipment in there, we just tried to keep them limping along at that point because they didn't invest any money at that point. But I can tell you that.
The IT president, I get it, okay.
Yeah, when they, uh, when they wanted to add a computer, they would go buy, buy like one of these little small office, home office switches. And then they would just screw it up underneath the desk and then they'd move on, they'd just run the cable off of it to the new computer. So they've got them like that everywhere, it's, it's, it's in bad shape.
So I've got a question, I know the schools, you know, all have their own library, but the library system, the Three Rivers, they have a lot of actual programs. Does the Board of Education contribute to any part of funding for those programs or maintenance supply?
She starts smoking crack.
He's never sat down with a vote, has he?
I love him, but no, they, I seriously doubt there's been anything from the county library.
The, the final number, which were they considered tier four, would be a, uh, a, a van, a transport vehicle that, that would bring, uh, mobile, mobile internet, uh, forty thousand dollars, that would bring it up to one thirty total.
Yeah, that'll be back into that one. Uh.
So without the van, you'd be at ninety with the building renovations.
Yeah, we get next to the van, I'm not overly concerned about a conference room. Uh, I mean, just, nah. Is it forty thousand dollars, like, do some, put the internet in that place?
Yeah. Why don't you sit up front?
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna work him out, he's sitting back there all the time.
It's, it's in really bad shape and the equipment.
Oh, you told us that.
If they, if they build it out correctly, it, it would be forty thousand dollars. The, uh, the internet cost, that's a separate cost, you would have that from whoever your service provider is, like TDS.
Now, would they be changing the internet service, that was another one I've.
Well, that's what I'm not a hundred percent sure of, uh, I mean, it says internet services, services, so that would be a recurring cost every year.
I understand, but, but what I'm saying is, what kind of internet, well, I mean, but what are they getting, or I'm assuming they're on.
They're on TDS now, that's.
I understand, but are, are they on fiber optic or?
No, I'm not sure what their bandwidth speed is.
They're all fiber optic?
No.
Is that there yet?
I mean, they may have a, uh, when you say fiber optic, that, there, that's just the cable usage that's going into the place.
Right.
Uh, their bandwidth.
The, 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 the bandwidth of their, the speed gets much better.
Well, you can have a piece of fiber and you can throttle the speeds that you give across it.
Yeah, I understand.
So they're limited by whatever, you know, what they're paying the, the ISP, the TDS or whoever. Uh, I'm not sure what the speeds are they use now, but I know previously they were sufficient for what we were doing out there.
But I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, are we building a Ferrari here with a Volkswagen engine, are we building a Volkswagen with a Ferrari engine? I mean, I was just, he, he, one of them, they're good.
Yeah, without seeing the, the layout of what the equipment they're buying and what they're planning on doing, it's kinda hard to say, but I can see where they'd spend forty thousand dollars on equipment. Because when I was out there last, they had no firewall, their server was outdated then, I don't know if they had any upgrades.
Well, I guess, I, I guess, the only need really have from firewall is members of the, their membership, people's information. I mean, somebody stole the copy of, who cares?
The, the weird thing about the library is, they've got, I guess there's some state laws they have to follow that says you can't, according to them now, this is what they've told me. You can't, you can't limit what people can see at the library.
You can't what?
You can't limit what they can see. Basically, if they wanted to go look at an adult website, you can't stop it, you can't filter it.
What's that?
What's that?
I guess I'm trying to understand what the relevance of that is in this.
Well, if you've got people over there who's streaming media across there, that's gonna suck your bandwidth up quick. Like you were talking about earlier, video, audio. So your internet bandwidth is gonna have to increase if they're gonna, you know, obviously make that open to everybody.
So you're saying all the folks that are hooked on that kinda stuff would be a second to follow bandwidth?
Well, not necessarily just that, I mean, it could be a, a number of different things they're doing that would increase the bandwidth. What I'm saying is, there's, there's no limit there on what they can stop.
They got that no limit now, so.
Yeah.
Let's just say they were doing conference calls on Zoom or something, that'd be.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, all that, anything like that's gonna pull bandwidth and that's gonna, if they're gonna put a lab in there, it's gonna have more people in there, there's gonna need to be more bandwidth.
I mean, they could be doing that on the phone line.
Training, yeah.
I can see the IT part forty.
I'm with you, Billy.
Yep.
I, I, I think I can go with the IT part. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, uh, if, if this I know y'all in the same engine, but if it's that bad, I, I can certainly enhance, you know, I, I, I've dealt with that internet.
Yeah, it was, it was really bad.
And I understand the throttle, you, you know, even though you're on high rocks, you pay for whatever speed.
Right.
So they understand how that works.
Gotcha.
I assume, I, I, and I, I had already written forty on that, so.
Yep, that's what else had mine.
All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Alrighty, uh, we've gotta go through everything first run. I'm at the point now, we're two hours and fifteen minutes. But my cousin was surprised to y'all, but I can go all night. I can talk right on, but maybe we want to let Ms. Nancy and everybody kinda regroup with these numbers, or have you regrouped with when?
The ARPA, we're down to, um, we reduced the ARPA request from fourteen million, two hundred and twenty to six million, three ninety-seven, five hundred, which leaves us a, a positive remaining balance of just over one point five million.
Yes.
We don't have a shortfall, we have.
I understand we don't have a shortfall, I, I, uh, it's, it's kinda chat about, well, I thought we had, I thought we had more than that left over. We had, basically at the outset, we had nine point eight to spend?
Eight, eight left to spend, so we.
Eight left to spend?
Yeah, cause we've already spent nine hundred thousand and we've already committed an additional one point seven, so that leaves us.
So none of those, the one point seven commitments are not in any of these things, we're looking to just wanna make sure of that.
Correct, correct.
Okay, well, we probably are, cause we've, uh.
And for clarification, the premium pay, we're not including that?
I've that's not in my world. But right now, I mean, I, uh, I'd like to go, what I'd like to do is put these numbers out and go back and look, cause like I said, these are monies that we're not gonna spend in the next twelve months. And these things are gonna change. Uh, what I would like to see, I, I, you know, it gets a little confusing. Uh, I'd like to see this, the ARPA funds, the, uh, uh, capital expenditures, you know, where we're spending our money, you know, what, where's the capital? You know, let's just pick on sheriff, being that he's sitting and doesn't have any buddies near with him, uh, excuse me. Well, let's just pick, so let, let's look at the sheriff's office and say, this is what we're spending from whatever fund or whatever it is, buildings or facilities or automobiles. You, you, you follow what I'm saying, I'd kinda like to, and then, you know, also have year one, you know, how much, how much we're gonna be spending each year because you know, for example, you know, in the lease situations, we're committing to five year leases, we got, you know, whatever, three years left, does that, am I making it somewhat clear?
Yeah, I understand.
I just kinda see what our.
But I, I'll, the, um, regarding the other funds, on Tuesday, I have to have a proposed budget so that we could stay on track for.
Good show of funds are you looking at, now you're talking about the, uh.
Just everything, I mean, all the other ones to.
Right, the capital expenditures?
Yes, like to make a determination, look at that, like, tonight, because.
Oh, so you wanna answer?
I do.
Ah.
I do.
Nancy, what was your figure that you had one point?
I have a surplus of one point five million, one million, five hundred and forty-three thousand.
That was in ARPA?
That was ARPA only, ARPA.
Right. Going to the capital expenditure fund, she'd already put together, that she had seven thirty with the, with the fund balance coming in and the four hundred being added to it, uh, she's, we're committing six, six hundred and fifty thousand if we considered everything on here. Uh, I'm not sold on the Bola training simulator, I still don't understand that one. Do you? I don't.
I, I don't.
Well, honestly, I would be careful. Let's do this. Once again, these are fluid documents. We can take these recommendations, we're at six fifty out of seven thirty, and, you know, they may come back, so if we don't want the Bola, we'll have the E-Bola, or, you know what I mean? There's, you know, I, I don't know when we're talking about actually going out doing this stuff, but and that's kinda what I wanna keep in mind too, all these things aren't gonna happen at once. There are certain things on these lists here that we, once we pull the trigger off, we're, we're pot committed on it. I.e. automobiles, for example, you know, uh, things like that, uh, things like, you know, mag. Uh, things like, you know, Maggie's out there and he hustles up and gets a bunch of contracts, him and Shalana. Hey, y'all go ahead and sit out of the RFPs, because it's not going to get cheaper. And let's move forward.
So we're leaving the Bola rap in for now.
Huh?
We're leaving the Bola rap in for now under capital expenditures, the twenty-four thousand dollars.
I don't have a problem leaving it in, like I said, you know, and it don't mean that before, before funds go out, it needs to be requested. Let's don't just get out there and say, okay, we started ordering all this like we're Christmas shopping, you know?
I mean, these these items are going to be approved in our fiscal year twenty-three budgets.
Right.
So it's not.
I Googled it.
I mean, it's not.
Really is. What is it?
And the Earth is pretty accurate, it's a cavalard, cavalard glove, if they buy, get them and hold them, and a restraint system built into it.
It's it's, they're different components to it, like Commissioner Brand said, that the.
That would be for jail a lot, I would think.
Primarily, they'd be used in the jail, but the control, they would they would use it also.
Well, I guess I can see it either way, when you're in close quarters and you don't want to get shocked yourself.
Well, and sometimes you really want to be discreet of what you're doing.
I got you. You walk up there with a glove on, and it's, you see me with Michael Jackson, you walk up with a gun out, they think you fixing to shoot. You buy, got you. All right, let's just, you know, like I said, let's leave that in there. I mean, and, you know, let's talk about it when it goes to happen.
Well, I mean, the question I had, you know, if we approved this, all these items, which I'm, you know, not really saying we shouldn't, but, you're saying it's a fluid document, but if we approve these as funded items in the budget, then it's, I mean, it's kind of like, I mean, I know members, we still have to prove them in our.
The ones that you would see again are any purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, everything.
If it's under twenty-five thousand.
Everything comes back up again.
Oh, this is this is not a real deal, because we're sitting here and signing.
Right, yeah, e- everything's coming back up again, and like I said, priorities and needs are 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 fluid, you know?
Uh, the biggest items being the motor graders would have to come before the board.
Well, there's going to be a lot of things over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
But yes, the motor graders.
They're really, not in the capital expenditures.
I'm looking at a seventy-five thousand dollar building and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Now, which one are you looking at, capital?
On page nine, yes, there's four items.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
There's four items out of the list, so there's not many that would come before.
So other equipment? One, two, three, one, two, three. I see five or six.
If it's under twenty-five thousand, typically it would not come before the board.
Okay, I'm looking at seventy-five thousand, thirty-six thousand, thirty-five thousand, so that'll be, Bola's twenty-four, four ninety-two. Probably when you get the paperwork, it's going to be twenty-five, it'll be there too, and the two motor graders. But either way, the the thrust is, these type things are going to be, you're going to see them again and have another buy the air day apple. My point, we're just budgeting right now. And, you know.
And page eleven is the SLOST request?
Page eleven, what?
Page eleven is the SLOST requests.
Okay, now this, does this, this takes us out projected to the end of SLOST with the exception of the money that we were talking about earlier when our tier one commitments are fulfilled, there'll be an additional seventy-five thousand roughly, assuming sales hold up for the next. All right, we're on it, Wes.
You told us to take out that one ninety-two down on the bottom.
Yes, they got the one ninety-two, so the deficit is a hundred and six thousand.
Yeah.
But yes, the the million ninety-two is what's projected up to the fifty-five million. Once we hit fifty-five million, then, which we probably will, then that would come back to the county and we'll spend it on.
And that's.
Which will probably cover that deficit.
More than cover it.
Oh, it's more than covered, so this going, we're looking at, we're looking at the the tier one projects being covered up by July. And then, you know, one or two months will cover that, so.
So we've got a billion and a half plus left over, what you're saying?
Uh, I I think there's some confusion, so we have not collect.
No, it's blocked, it's blocked, I'm talking about the ARPA funds.
A million and a half left on ARPA, but getting back to the SLOST and the point about the level two projects being fully funded versus whether we're going to collect fifty-five million or more, we have not collected fifty-five million or close to that yet. We've still got several several more months before we get to that. So the point being is that if we exhaust that one point one, a roughly figure there, and one in this upcoming fiscal year, we're going to have to dip in other funds to cover any other capital requests. And again, all these requests are just for fiscal year twenty-three. We still have several other requests pending after this upcoming fiscal year.
You think there's going to be more requests following years?
Absolutely.
Shock.
I bet.
Yeah, and that's what I was saying, you know.
My point being is that we could go a year where we need to dip into funds if we exhaust this right now.
But we are anticipating. I I understand, but we'll be funded on that, on those projects in July.
What happens in July is just the thirty-five percent drops off the top, so that we're actually divying up a hundred percent of the distribution. But that's all factored into that fifty-five million. So that it it's, we're going to collect money faster, but it's still just collecting up to that fifty-five million, which is what the referendum was. So that factor of, you know.
At once you hit the fifty-five million, does it stop?
No, we continue to receive it and our, um, understanding is that the county gets all of that money. And it's no longer distributed to the city.
Okay, uh, well, like I said, going back to this right here, uh.
There's, there's a little bit of a timing issue on this. And and again, I'm just saying that if you allocate the full, just that full one point two million dollars, you know, after you back out the, or one point one million.
I got you.
If you back that out, I mean, you just fully fund everything right here for this upcoming fiscal year. There may be a period there where we will have to dip into either ARPA or our our capital funds to cover any other capital requests that come up in fiscal year twenty-four. The only reason why I say that is because we may not collect up to that fifty-five million dollar number until another year, year and a half.
So what you're saying is we're going to put, we're going to put ourselves in a cash flow problem?
You would.
That's what I, I was, what I was making earlier, where where where. Let's look at the stuff that we can do in the upcoming first, in the next twenty-four months, twelve months. Uh, uh, some things have to commit beyond that, such as vehicle leases and things like that, but beyond that, facilities, security upgrades, two hundred thousand.
That.
That is for this building.
What we have.
We we viewed that as a critical need.
I'm not in here.
That's that's mainly talking about cameras.
Uh, now I got it. I said, I I see y'all have, this would be y'all's considered priority, so then everything that's not prioritized. So I I guess what what I'm trying to, what what I'm saying here is committing to this stuff essentially, right? No, but it necessarily committed to it. I think most of them's going to come back.
It's, it's a budget, so, which is.
Well, it's a fluid document.
But we wouldn't want to go into it with the most, you know, accurate projections that we thought it, you know, we would have. If we didn't think one of these things would happen, we're better off just taking it off to have for accuracy purposes.
If we if we don't think something's going to happen, we just take it off?
No, there, yeah, if there's something that you could look at and it's, you know, we're not going to do that. That's, it's it's an item that, you know, you're just not going to consider, such as when we were talking about ARPA in the library. You didn't want to buy the the van, so we'll reduce the the budget by that.
So you want, so.
So if there's any items here.
All right, then let me ask you this, let's just go ahead and another one. You're looking at this, monitoring it, what number would you feel like we need to hold in reserve is what you're saying, uncommitted?
With only the million ninety-two thousand remaining, I would probably not budget more than five hundred thousand for.
There's the number.
Machinery, equipment and technology.
So you.
For fiscal year twenty-three, and then each year we could reassess as we get closer, because it still remains uncertain that this upward trend of collection, which is, you know, a real windfall, but we don't know if it's going to continue, because it's based on inflation, it's based on many things.
We've got nine vehicles listed here, count them out.
All right, that's, I I understand what you're saying, but I'm looking at what you've got asterisk and considered priority. You don't want us to commit over five hundred, but you got eight hundred and ninety as priority. So you want us to pick which one of those priority items are we going to throw out? I'm just trying to. Help me out here.
Well, I I think considering that we've got, we've got about one point five million left out of ARPA, some of these could be allocated to that if you choose to. We knew we were going to have significant requests out of SLOST, but contingent upon what would happen with ARPA, you've got a million and a half left out of that, some of these items could be moved over to that category.
So you want to remove some of the SLOST items over to the ARPA side?
If you, I mean, it it can be spent on general government services at this point.
I understand.
So.
It's, we're back to the pea shell again.
Correct.
Again, what's.
But SLOST is restrictive, so ARPA's not as restrictive.
I understand that, so, you know, why, you know.
These, these were not ARPA requests, is the.
I understand that.
Differentiation.
I understand that. SLOST has parameters, ARPA essentially doesn't. So I say we leave the stuff in the SLOST until a board or this board six months from now sees the need to move it. I mean, this is just for budgeting.
I agree with you.
I mean, uh, so I'm, you know, if you want me to cut here, cut a trim, I can do it, I get it. But I that's why I was asking, you were looking at one point, you know, one point two here, one million, two hundred in requests, uh, we have a, we're a hundred and eight short, I get it, so, uh. Uh, if you would like. Yeah, I'm kind of like Commissioner Brand now, just a lot of vehicles in here. I see this is a replacement. Am I seeing just one replacement, with the exception of the lease on the, uh, sheriff's office?
Yes.
Okay, here's another, I'm looking at.
And the vehicles total.
Animal animal control replaced the fleet services, the two thousand eighty Chevy, Chevy Blazers to be replaced.
The vehicles total five hundred and eleven thousand, so, again, potentially that could be left in and everything else moved over to ARPA.
But tell me what's the purpose, so I can, I just, I get it.
To appropriately budget it, or we think the expenditure is going to come out of.
Do you want fully commit ARPA tonight?
It's not necessary. We could leave all this, I, it's it's up to certainly the commissioners.
I understand, we're just trying to.
However, it it, this could all be in SLOST or put in as budget, and to your point, as each vehicle comes up for purchase, likely it would come before the board because of the cost.
It will.
Oh, yeah.
And at that point, the determination could be made whether or not.
Or we're going to split it out at what part?
We're going to proceed, correct.
Oh, you got one and a half million plus left over in ARPA. There's six hundred and fifty-one, seven hundred and twenty dollars for the parks that I would like to see spent. You take that.
That's right, that's right, that's not even there, Ben, glad you were right.
Well, hold on, you you take that six hundred and fifty-one, then you take the, um, security upgrades, that's two hundred thousand. Take the, the hundred and twenty thousand, backhoe, the hundred and fifty thousand front end loader, and a hundred and fifty three thousand for the, um, five-year computer refresh, then two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the, um, for the, um, new vehicles for the sheriff's office, and that wipes out your ARPA funds.
Okay, uh, well, what's the point, uh, help me out there, what you trying to?
Well, that clears up our deficit or whatever for for SLOST monies.
Well, y'all, we we we've only got a hundred thousand dollar deficit in SLOST at the moment.
Yeah, but that projected money that we captured in SLOST can be used for other things later on.
Well, yeah. Or. I understand, I think I understand, trying to, you're trying to get us to get this number here next budget cycle to get it down.
Right, because there's three more cycles on SLOST eight before the new SLOST starts.
Instead of spending all this money right now on SLOST on different projects, let's just kind of hold back on them, even though they're going to be, because we might as well, that's going to be done. You just don't want to spend them all up, all, it's all committed to this, this fiscal year coming up.
Correct.
And just in the positions the sheriff's talking about, uh, till he gets those positions, positions fulfilled, we don't know when, he don't know when.
Yeah, I think a vehicle until he gets those positions.
Right, and, you know, they they got some. The the ones we bought, the ones we're leasing, he he's going to have some vehicles to play with from that he has had, you know, uh.
One, one thing I will say, and and we've kind of talked about these asterisks, I mean, we tried to pick some from almost every department that really needed some critical items, and out of, just in speaking with those directors, those were the most critical for them.
And that that takes me back to the point, those asterisk items is almost nine hundred thousand. And, but you don't, you're limited to five hundred.
Well, I'm, we were just talking about five hundred for SLOST eight, because you still have three years left before you can have another SLOST approved.
But the money's going to be sent in ARPA, what's the dang difference?
Well, that's, that's what we were talking about, if you wanted to fund it, that's an option.
Uh, I understand, but what I'm saying is, whether if, you know, uh, these things we can do out of SLOST. So I say leave them in, and I understand we're more committing this, but we got the greatest degree of flexibility in the ARPA. And whether we go out and buy the backhoe and all that stuff, and right now or not remains to be seen. I don't know when, what her thoughts are on on this, uh, her equipment upgrades, if you.
Take out the one ninety-two, uh, one seventy-seven, then the asterisk left, my total is six ninety-eight on the asterisk items.
That's the cards of our lease.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's out.
You should count that, get the top number already, so, yeah, that's why you move that. Count that. Get the top number already. Yeah, that's why you move that.
Thirty-seven hundred thousand.
What did I do?
The asterisk items are two hundred thousand, one twenty, one fifty-three, and two twenty-five.
Six ninety-eight, is that what you said?
Six ninety-eight, yep.
Leave the asterisk items in. That's close to dang nothing.
Got it.
And as we gather through this, if we collect our collections, we can add more to it.
Well, that's a, a huge factor, but we don't have the money yet.
Yes, I understand.
That, it's almost like you wanna do your spending more in the back end than the front end because we don't have it yet.
I don't know. And we're still a month behind on.
Yes, yes, yes. Like we just collected, we received a distribution May thirty-first, and that was for April distributions or collect, sales tax.
So can you, so can you give us, how we go through this and tell us with the revenue that we're getting off of SPOS monthly? When a project comes to do, we look at it, we have the money and it's not going to show or anything. You come in and say, hey, got it now, one of the projects we want.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. But, I mean, that's not gonna come, but yes. But I'm just. But these projects are gonna get done. Oh, yeah. Yeah. These projects will get done, like I said, until somebody decides there's something more important than whatever's on here.
I'd like to commit the six hundred and fifty-one thousand so, to the parks this year as soon as possible.
Could we get a commitment?
That's from ARPA.
From ARPA. From ARPA. Could we get a commitment from the PSA that if we made those improvements, they're gonna accept them?
They, their rhythm is gonna accept them as is. Yeah, so, but that's not fair.
Right.
To put them on the condition they're in now, they need to be brought up standard.
No, that was the thing we talked about.
We did. And, and you, you were adamant about doing that.
Oh, yeah. No, I agree. I had backed off of that.
Yeah.
Going back to ARPA.
Whether the PSA has sent it over to the PSA or not, it doesn't matter. It just needs to be done.
Oh, deal be off.
Well, I mean, right now, the county's having to pay insurance on these parks.
Yep.
Okay, right. And, you know, now the, the one.
Well, that was part of the, the deal about combining, you know, either put them all under the PSA was to go consolidate the insurance.
True. And see, didn't people go out and use those parks that are not necessarily in town as well?
Yep.
And I've come up here and used, you know, so the point being with it in the, uh, PSA, you basically got three in the share in those costs.
Yeah.
But then PSA is in control of its destiny as it relates to, to parks and recreation. And then the county goes out of business of parks and recreation.
Ms. Nancy, well, a while ago, you said you would like to not commit over five hundred thousand, but the asterisk is, we'd be looking at it six ninety-eight.
That would work.
That would work. That's what we're just, we just, what we're talking about, what we're going to, we're gonna stick with this, with that. All right, now back to these parks and, and I, 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 I do agree. I, I, I think the, uh, park system, our facilities need to be brought up to date. That's what we're talking about. You know, I think the, the long-term goal was to get them brought up to, to date as they should be, turn them over to the PSA and then let it be, let those facilities be managed at the PSA. Here by everybody.
Does this include any aluminum picnic tables?
No, I do not want a aluminum picnic table in here at all. By God, if I see a aluminum, I'm gonna ski it myself. I promise you. I might have a ski mask on. Might see a white Colorado truck, then it'll be me. But I will snatch that sucker the first time I see it.
So what I would like to see in the parks is, um, you know, I don't know if he's got it in here or not, but, um, we need, it would be nice to have Wi-Fi in the parks. Then you can have security cameras as well. I don't know if he's got that figured in here or not.
I agree with Ben.
I do not. Uh, the figures that you're looking at?
Yeah, well, yeah. I, this is to tell you, I agree because it's just.
Agree with which one?
With, yeah, because you gotta have those cameras that we have in all this money.
That is not included in that, in that, uh, that figure that you have in front of you. No. Uh, the figure you have in front of you is just to bring you up to the standard of what we have there as of right now. Come on up, Louis.
Matt, one.
Well, here comes Louis. He gonna sell us all that five billion dollars.
Rob, man, take care of it. When people round all the numbers off, these are your best guesstimates.
Those are my best guesstimate, uh, speaking with, uh, the people that, that do those repairs. Um, and I also was working with, with Buck as well with it, uh, with some of that so that he knows.
Are we outsourcing this?
Some of it we are outsourcing, some of it we are doing internally. Um, it, and those are.
Doing internally would be about half of this.
Uh, well, it's included, it's already included as sort of the internally, uh, with the figures.
Louis, what you trying to sell again?
Well, I was just gonna ask if there's something you wanna start looking into is Wi-Fi for the parks? Because there's that broadband project between the facilities, but there's other ways we can make that happen for those parks if you want to look at it.
So what, what are you thinking?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, we could actually work with, you know, any one of the ISPs, whether it's TDS or Comcast or whoever's got service in those locations.
How many facilities would we, are we talking about?
Well, count them off.
Is each one of these on there?
Fifteen of them, I think, it's on there.
You wouldn't have to have it at all fifteen, because you're not.
Not the docks.
So, yeah, so some of those are doubled up because you have, you have docks next to the parks and, uh, and the docks as well.
I'm not familiar enough with the parks.
About fifteen without the dock, yeah.
How many of them?
About fifteen.
So about fifteen sites. What, what were we talking about for that, you think?
That, uh, rough number, you're probably looking at a hundred and fifty dollars a month per site, but you're gonna have some upfront costs for, uh, equipment.
But again, I mean, that would be a long-term maintenance of the park that the PSA would be handling with the dock. And that's just Wi-Fi, not including security cameras like you're talking about to get, getting upgraded up.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not necessarily a big fan of wireless security cameras. We don't have Wi-Fi out there. We can also have it hardwired in.
Yeah, the other question is, is with those cameras, are you gonna wanna have footage you can go back and look at? I mean, 'cause then you're gonna have.
Well, I know we're gonna. We need to buy storage there.
Well, supposedly we just had to find the little amount of Eric's Bluff Park again.
Again.
So you would want the ability to go back.
Yep.
Right.
Well, then.
At least if, if.
How many other parks does the PSA manage?
I'm more than we.
Yeah.
I mean.
I can get some numbers, yes.
Do they manage any? Do those have?
He would.
Okay, we'll do so.
I do agree. I, I, I don't wanna spend all this money on these parks and we can't monitor them. Sean is not gonna go out and patrol them like he should.
But, and again, I mean, I think that's a great idea, but if, if the ultimate goal in the next year or so is to make these improvements, some needed to the PSA, I mean, that wouldn't be something for the county at that time to be. It's possible.
What?
Make, monitor in the parks.
No, once we did, we would be, be PSA, which is what he was talking about. Don't wanna get them all fixed up and then there's no way of. Okay. So.
Actually, eleven parks, taking out all the docks and boat ramps.
Eleven?
About eleven.
Eleven facilities, you said.
Taking out the docks and boat ramps. And Gillington dial.
Yeah.
I couldn't. Yeah.
Which ones you talking about?
Pushed it real tight, you could.
Uh, Brown Town, Maple Ford, Mary Bee's Park.
Slow, Brown Town, Maple Ford, Mary Bee's Smart.
Harri's Bluff, Howard Peoples, Woodbine Park, and Cunina Jackson.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. Did I? Seven facilities. Do you, you, you know which ones we're talking about, Louis? Let me just read them to you again slowly. Brown Town, Maple Ford, Mary Bee Park, Harri's Bluff, Howard Peoples, Woodbine Park. Now, that's, it's got boat ramp in here, but I don't.
They also, the parks there with all the amenities that go with it. So the boat ramp's the smallest part of it, basically, as far as the park.
Okay. And then, uh, Cunina, Cunina Jackson Park, that's seven. So it's much less than what first blush looked like.
Y'all wanna look at, um, selling the Gillington Island program.
I'll make you a deal on it. Some kind of, too. You like buying useless land?
Yeah.
Then I can send it to you. All right, so, uh, uh, you know, back to the parks and furniture, I think that's what we need to do. Louis can give us the number on with that. And, you know, and that's something I'd be, be putting in the ARPA side, I guess. That's where we left. Hey, you not finished your budget?
Yes.
Anything else? Y'all ready?
Started. You don't wanna stretch this out eight more minutes?
Oh, I can stretch it out to midnight. Now, trust me, I've, I've, I got the wind for it.